Good morning and Happy New Year, everyone. It is exactly 9:03, and we are ready to roll on our January 4th, 2017 meeting of the City Council, which is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2, and are closed-caption for hearing impaired viewers. Please note, customers, this entry link, you may view this program in high-definition on Channel 1 or 02. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 on the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 5:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler systems. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace, and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please be sure to check with city marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Streets. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment-related items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk up front. Cards are available online, the clerk's office, or the rear of these chambers. However, if you did not submit a card, it doesn't prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone's present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's staff. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, please be sure to have your ticket validated by security personnel when exiting. Before we proceed with the agenda and our ceremonials, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Chaplain Victoria Compey, Messages of Faith Ministries, and remain standing for the pledge. Thank you.
For those who wish to bow their head and join in prayer, I pray, Almighty God, I come before you this day and ask for blessings upon the Las Vegas City Council and the office of the mayor, and for the citizens of this great city and state. I pray you feed our leaders here today on your wisdom and your understanding for their good and for the good of all those whom they serve. Amen.
Probably, I'm going to say, because unfortunately, what's going on in the city and all your wards, I'm trying to use a lot of the cameras to take a load off, but I would certainly bring your paper cup full of things. I would say, considering everything, we... Is everybody listening to this wonderful conversation? We're doing an over and under on the length of the state of the city, which has been known to go on for two hours. Not quite that long. Okay. All right, here we are. Of course you do, just, you know, fess up!
In front of the judges, too.
And we have Councilman Barlow. I want you all to put your hands together and give him a round of applause. He completed his MBA at Pepperdine. And now he's back in the land of the living. He's dropped about 20 pounds. 25 pounds? Weight watchers?
Watch what I eat.
Watch what I eat. That means his wife is no longer cooking, and you're starving. But now it means all new clothing. I love it.
Just resizing.
Resizing. Okay, here we go. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and for our... Well, here we go. Mr. GQ, Councilman Barlow, are you gonna go sit down? This man, we have to put a collar on him.
You want me to get the rope?
Yes, please. A hook. No, I'm just gonna have a hook on you. Well, it's fine, we love all of our friends. Okay. Councilman Barlow, you are going to recognize a local committee, so... Look at you, I'm just so proud.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. I appreciate it, Mayor, thank you so very much. Happy New Year to everyone! Happy holidays, good to see everyone, and if I missed it, happy birthday to those January babies out here. Today, I have the distinct privilege and honor of recognizing a committee that has done a lot for the Las Vegas community for over 35 years, and that's none other than the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Committee. And at this time, I would like to ask the, I would like to call him the chairman and CEO, who has basically served in this capacity as chairman for more than three decades, right here in the Las Vegas community, and that's none other than our former state assemblyman, Mr. Wendell P. Williams. If you'll please come forward and stand with me. Today, ladies and gentlemen, as we recognize the Martin Luther King Jr. Committee as Award Five Citizens of the Month, in great recognition of their 35th anniversary, which will take place January 15th, 2017, and so I know that we have members... Oh, please stand here, Wendell. I know that we have members also from your committee, because this is a group effort, and so all of those who have participated and members of the MLK Jr. Committee, if you all please come and stand with me as well. I think it's only significant because this is your day that we're celebrating for the wonderful job that you've done in this community for so many years. The committee was organized by Wendell P. Williams December of 1981. The organization was created to develop programs and action projects to build the blueprint tenants of the beloved community, which is a declaration of sensitivity, tolerance, peace, nonviolence, drafted by the late Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Founder Wendell P. Williams was elected to the Nevada Legislature in 1986. Williams and committee members Morris Arberry Jr. introduced and passed Assembly Bill 116, which created the King Holiday in the state of Nevada. It was officially signed by the Nevada Governor, Richard Bryan. Governor Bryan at the time proclaimed the holiday several years prior to the legislature's official enactment. In 1985, Senator Governor Bryan established the Nevada State Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday Commission, which linked Nevada into the Federal Holiday Commission. Accomplishments of the board include gatherings over 10,000 signatures, with hopes to establish a paid Nevada State Holiday, engaged in petition to convert former Highland Drive, which is now the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, the most beautiful Martin Luther King Boulevard in the nation, petitioned the Clark County School District to establish a school namesake for Dr. Martin Luther King, as well as establish a youth tutorial program in 1987. Past president included Dorla Grand, Vera Sampson, Kabola Daba, Commissioner Lawrence Weekly, and Gwen Amy. The first television relationship for the Martin Luther King Parade occurred with KLAS TV Channel 8. Although the parade was not broadcasted on Channel 8, Gary Waddell and Paula Francis participated by providing live announcing during live announcements during the parade for over a decade. However, the biggest media exposure came in 2009, when Cox Communications began broadcasting the parade on television. In later years, most local radio stations began to broadcast the parade, especially KCP Power 88. The committee's most prestigious endeavors is the Young Dreamers Youth Program. This program highlights schoolchildren who are selected by their teachers who exemplify the tenants of brotherhood, love, and understanding. This very successful program was the brainchild of MLK member Kim Fortson, well, Kim Fortson-Cox, and it continues today. In great recognition of the Martin Luther King Jr. Committee's 35th anniversary of keeping Dr. King's legacy alive in Las Vegas, and for their outstanding services to the community, we, the mayor, and members of the Las Vegas City Council urge the entire community to join with us, as we do hereby proudly proclaim today as the Martin Luther King Jr. Committee Day in the City of Las Vegas. All right? And Wendell, I will present you with this proclamation, and I'll also ask that you share a few words, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, and good morning to everyone. Obviously, 35 years has taken the work of a lot of people. You know, I get acknowledged as the founder of the organization, but it took a lot of people and a lot of efforts in this great city. And for 35 years, I can tell you, our relationship with the City of Las Vegas has gone through a lot of changes. The first time that I wrote a letter to the city to do the first parade in 1982, it was Mayor Brier. So I wrote the letter, wanted to do a parade, I got a letter back the next day, "Go right ahead and have your parade, just obey the traffic signs." Now, you know, of course, it takes quite a great deal to do a parade permit, but we've gone through Mayor Brier, Mayor Lurie, Mayor Jones, Goodman and Goodman. So it takes quite a bit of cooperation, and I might say positive cooperation from the City of Las Vegas Councilmen, to do this. I want to acknowledge the members that are here, the Fortsons, Betty and Tanya, Bobby McRoy, who started with me in the very beginning. We started this parade, actually, it actually generated from the Doolittle Community Center when I was working at the Doolittle Community Center. We were just sort of an idea that has grown and grown. But Las Vegas is one of the cities in America that has always been one that was ahead of the game when it comes to doing things in ways that other cities have not. And because of that, there are a lot of things and a lot of challenges that come with that. The Dr. King blueprint is important to our city today, just as it was when he first talked about how we as a community can live together as friends or we can perish as fools. We, as an organization, our goal is to make sure that Las Vegas is mindful that brotherhood, peace, and understanding is better than anything else, and love is a lot better than hate. And we just, we're so proud to be here today to talk about that. We've gotten to the point now, and I want to acknowledge one of our major sponsors for our, right now, our parade is sponsored by MGM Resorts International, and our scholarship dinner, we've been able to give hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarships over the years, and a lot of that has to do with Caesar's Entertainment. Mr. Regina Ford is here, who helps with, helps us with that, and of course, folks from MGM as well. Our parade every year, I would be remiss and pretentious if I didn't mention, is always led by the students from Wendell P. Williams Elementary School. Our principal and assistant principal is here, Ms. Ireland and Ms. Emma, would you stand, please? The date for the parade this year, of course, is on the holiday, January 16th. The banquet is on the 14th at the Gold Coast. My wife tells me how much she helps me with this, I haven't really seen it yet, but she's here, Ms. Zelda Williams up front here. She reminded me today of how much she helps me, but, yeah. Yeah. Behind the scenes, the mayor says. But a lot of things, as the councilman mentioned, we were, we were involved in the name change of Highland to now Martin Luther King Boulevard, and from that point, I never imagined that when we were doing that, that it would turn out today to be the most beautiful Martin Luther King in the world. In the world. In the world. Yeah. And then we did the petition drive, and we also lobbied the school district for Martin Luther King Elementary, and of course, in the legislature, along with my colleague at that time, Assemblyman Coffin, who also co-sponsored the legislation for the holiday. And from that legislation, also we became Family Day the day after Thanksgiving. So we look forward to celebrating this 35th King Week Las Vegas here coming up later this month, and we appreciate to have this, this really signal and moment of dedication for us. And we've grown over the years, we've grown over the years, we've done some things differently. We now have, for the first time, a parade ambassador, one who goes out and who goes out and promote and serves as our ambassadors, you know, and we're so proud to have that particular position and that particular person, because we have so many people who have quote-unquote celebrities in our communities, and we don't see them give back. And Mr. Antonio Fargas, 50 years of stage and screen, is our parade ambassador, and we appreciate him so much, you all know him, he's done a great job. Thank you.
The ever unsilent Councilman Coffin wants to say something.
Wendell P., you did not lose your speaking skills, so it looks like you interrupted before the presentation, but let me, let me just take this moment or two to say congratulations to the committee, and acknowledge the many years of work that happened. It just happened in 86 or 87, or 89, I mean, I think we finally passed it, it was not without a lot of grief. A person who never became a member of the committee, but who saw, who fought a lonely, lonely, losing battle for years in the Senate was Joe Neal. Senator Joe Neal is still with us, I think he turned 80, and he is probably watching this today, so we want to make sure that we recognize Neal, because his work was hard, he was by himself, the only black senator, the only person who understood what was going on when the bill kept getting killed. The idea of a holiday being killed was always financial reasons, but there always seemed to be something else, a subtext. In any event, finally, a critical mass, I think, in the Assembly happened, and I think that gave the boost to Senator Neal and others who were supporting the thing, and it just came, its time was there. And Senator Neal cried on the floor when that passed, I was there to see it. And so I think that he's not here, but we should remember him, and next time we see him, let's give him a handshake and a congratulations on this, too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The City of Las Vegas Citizen of the Month, ladies and gentlemen, is presented to the Martin Luther King Jr. Committee. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you, congratulations. And Mayor, I'll turn the microphone back over to you. Yes, yes, we can do it.
Okay, we have a picture over here, if you'll all come over, and I have a good luck mayorship. Now that we have so much publicity on these, they're good luck and good health in 2017, and Happy New Year to you all, and thank you so much.
Also, the community will know that the sign for the Citizen of the Month sign will be held, I'm sorry, hung out front of City Hall for the entire month of January, so we'll be taking a photo right here with the King Committee. Mounted, thank you. It will be mounted. Thank you. They hung me on a horse, but they mounted the sign. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, let's get around the sign, if there's room for all of us. Over to the left. Councilwoman, you'd better get in front, because you are among the smallest, you're dwarfed. Okay, I'm gonna go in back here. Okay, so we have to cluster, Shane, wherever you are, could you raise your hand, Shane? All right, so everybody, if you can see him, then you're in the picture. I have room right here, we're gonna close it?
Yeah.
All right, come on in. Okay. Wait, we gotta get Councilwoman. Uh-huh, okay. There we go. We're booking the Shane I today. Okay, everybody, look at Shane. And you know what I noticed, Councilman Barlow, which really bothers me? The sign says Martin Luther King, it doesn't say Martin Luther King Jr. Well, we need to change it anyway. Right? Right. Every sign should say that, it's about the man, and so we have to do that. And I'm sorry I'm gonna miss the parade, I'm gonna be in Washington, not for the inauguration, but the Conference of Mayors. No, the U.S. Conference of Mayors! So, but I'll be thinking of you and watching you all march. Thank you, and congratulations, Happy New Year, and thank you for making this the best parade we have, along with our Veterans Day parade, the best. And we love your suit. I love it, I can't wait. Could you please make sure, put this camera on him? Beautiful. Okay. Yeah, very colorful. See, I got so excited about Councilman Barlow here. Okay, here we go, for our next item. It's my pleasure to recognize a team of city employees who have a very important job here at the city, and I'd like to invite our fabulous finance director, Vanetta Appleyard, to join us up here today, because we're honoring a very important group, our city payroll team. So anybody, thank you, Vanetta. Is there anybody, right, is there anybody in this entire city staff that doesn't appreciate our payroll committee? In fact, we could line up for extra takes. Anyway, this team that ensures city pay, city employees are paid, and that they're paid the correct amount. I want to have, you know who everybody is, so when you, when I announce your name, would you raise your hand, so everybody out there will know who's who? Cheryl Bull. There she is, this is Cheryl. Jessica Lindelof. Lindelof. And Christina Silva. Oh, I love this, can we get in line for extras? Donna Captein? Oh, I'm close, Captein, lovely. And Renee Gilvray. Mick Gil...
Miguel Gilvray.
Goodness gracious, you want to be part of the team, get an unusual name here. Anyway, please, a big round of applause for this wonderful team, and we are so grateful to you. This team processes paychecks for more than 3,600 employees twice a month, and they ensure that the amounts are correct, which should be a comfort to the taxpayers out there, as well as to our employees. Recently, they noted that the city had far too many retroactive time cards turned in coming through our system. This occurs when time cards aren't turned in on a timely basis by deadline, and payments still need to be made. So as you can guess, the more retroactive time cards we have out there, the more financial works jam up. So this team has adjusted the deadlines to make it easier for the department time clerks to meet them, and has resulted, here, this is this great City Hall, in a 76% decrease in retroactive time cards. So wonderful job. All you have to do is withhold their paycheck, and they get in line. So thank you so much for all your hard work here at City Hall, and I understand you were already honored, woo, during a surprise with your department and the city management team, is that right? Did we serve food?
We did.
Did we invite Councilman Anthony? Anywhere there's food, he comes. Sorry, sorry. Okay. But I know, Vanetta, you are so proud about this team, and love to have you say some comments, and then if you would like to have anybody else make some comments. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be up here to have this team recognized for their awesome efforts. Payroll is one of those behind-the-scenes teams that truly embodies our core values of action, and helps run the city, making sure that every employee gets paid on time and correctly. And as you know, this process takes place twice a week, or every other week, and, but in between, they're handling special requests, answering numerous questions, PIO research, and dealing with auditors on Pers and other payroll issues. Anyone that knows these folks know that they do it with a smile and a candid attitude. I am very excited to have payroll recognized as the action team of the quarter. I'm also very excited to congratulate Cheryl on her retirement after 21 years of service. And this is her final action with the payroll team.
Good luck and good health.
So thank you.
Thank you.
And I actually believe Jessica was going to be our speaker.
Okay, please, Jessica.
Thank you. This is a little more nerve-wracking than I thought there'd be. I just want to say thank you to our manager, Gail Lloyd-Licos, she's actually in Hawaii right now, perhaps watching us. Hi, Gail. I have a great team, I've been here just over two years right now, and these girls are just awesome, they do a great job, day in and day out, they care so much about what they do, so they really make us look good, so I'm very happy to have my team with me, and thank you very much.
We are really grateful, keep those checks coming! Christmas was very expensive this year, so if you could add a little something extra? Thank you. Thank you all, congratulations, we're proud of you, and good luck. What are you gonna do? You're gonna be bored out of your mind.
No, I'm moving to Idaho with my six grandchildren living.
Just you and the six grandchildren?
No.
I was gonna say, boy, that's a big mistake.
My daughter and son-in-law.
Oh, beautiful. Where in Idaho?
Idaho Springs. I'm so, Idaho Falls, rather, sorry.
That's all right, the Springs and the Falls, all Springs become Falls eventually. So wonderful. We appreciate it all. How many years you been with us?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one years. Isn't that great? We appreciate it, you're still young and lovely. Thank you, thank you all. Picture with the team, everybody, look at Shane back there. Thank you, thank you. Thank you all, we appreciate it. Thanks, Vanetta, thank you. Wonderful. Okay, and now, oh, Councilwoman, are you a fortunate lady, Councilwoman, you've got something so special here.
I think it's special, yes. I think probably the most misunderstood, complex, and still we need to research area of our bodies in the year 2017, is our brain and the emotional connections. At one time, oh, I think maybe it was 25 years ago, California led the charge, and monies for mental health help were taken away in California, and many states followed suit, and Nevada was one of them. Every state that followed suit still hasn't caught up to where they would have been if they had never started cutting in the first place. It's a, it's a difficult thing to understand when you have a need mentally and emotionally. It's difficult to understand depression, why do we have it? Is it chemical imbalance? Is it something that happens in the environment? Are you born with it? Is it genetic? And yet, these are things that we have that often lead to people having problems, getting into criminal areas, are people who every day you see and you walk by may have them. And none of us can fully understand, even the doctors and the specialists in the area, how great the pain is, how great the pain is for those who have those needs. So today, we're recognizing one of our wonderful specialty courts here in the City of Las Vegas, because it has tried and helped, and is a movement forward, so that we can gain back the need and support for our people who have mental health problems. The Mental Health Court was officially launched September 2nd, 2015. This specialty court is presided over by the Honorable Judge Amosi in Department III. The Mental Health Court program focuses on identifying and addressing the needs of defendants that have been diagnosed with a mental illness, or who self-report a history of mental illness and have an active case in the Las Vegas Municipal Court. The court works in collaboration with community partners to provide appropriate housing, drug-alcohol treatment, medication stabilization, counseling, and... medication stabilization, counseling, and community support connections. The goal of this program is to reduce the number of arrests and hospitalizations for the participants. Another goal for this court is to build bridges between families and resources. So, in 2016, the judge of our Mental Health Court received not one, I should say, the program received not one, but two awards, and I'd like to have Dr. Amosy come up, please, at this time. When you, when you have, when you begin to realize that sometimes these mental illnesses start at the age of two, or three, or older, I'm just talking to the audience while you're greeting our committee members, that was all. But anyway, this year, you receive not only one, but two awards. The first was the 2016 Connect for Mental Health Community Innovation Award, and the second was a National Alliance on Mental Illness and the National Council for Behavioral Health, recognizing our court in the continuity of care category for its approach to help address serious mental illness in the community. As part of this award, your court receives $10,000 to further implement your innovative and collaborative mental health care strategies, and that's wonderful. And I'd like you to tell the audience and aggressive our council more about what you do.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tarkanian, for the nomination, Mayor, City Council. We started last year, and we would not be able to operate without the generous funding that we received from City Council and the Mayor's office. And I wanna let you know what that money does. It stops the recidivism for the folks who have mental illness. It keeps them out of the jail. It keeps them out of emergency rooms. That's a direct benefit for the community. But more importantly, what we do for the folks who come into the court, who are some of our most vulnerable, is we get them treatment, we get them stabilization, we get them housing, we get their family's care and respite as well. I want all of you to know, who signed off on our funding, you have touched lives. There are families who were in the system, who had no support, no resources, and they are so grateful. I want each of you to know how much each of those families, they've come to me, they said thank you, and I wanna let you all know. There's at least 50 families that are doing better today because of the city of Las Vegas, because we believe in treating these folks and not just putting them in custody. So, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Really appreciate it.
And of course, she and her staff. Do you have any staff members here with you? Would you introduce them, please? They deserve some recognition.
I would be really remiss. I have my clinical coordinator, Sarah Stern. Stand up, Sarah. Sarah wrangles everybody 24/7. She has a heart of gold. I also have Joe Scott, who works for the city of Las Vegas. Joe is also a board member for Nevada's National Alliance on Mental Illness, and he is the one who nominated us for the award. Ms. Beverly Goldston, she wrangles all of the specialty courts on behalf of the city of Las Vegas. She's my guardian angel, so, thank you. I wouldn't be able to do it without my team. So, thank you so much.
All right, great job.
Who's over here? Is Beverly?
Renee.
Where's Renee? Oh, my JEA. She's responsible for babysitting me and keeping me out of trouble. She does a great job.
Dana, Dana's here.
Mr. Leback, Court Administration for the city of Las Vegas, Municipal Court.
I just wanna say how proud I am, and I know our other council members are also, of our court system and our specialty courts, and how we try the best we can financially to help, and to get into the cutting edge of what's happening in the world and helping others. And we thank you so very, very much. I'm going to present you with a significant, certificate of recognition. And Heidi, I want you to know how proud the City Council is of you, and of all your staff, of what you've done, and of the awards, particularly a national award, that's a wonderful thing to have. So, your work makes a positive difference in our community, and that's, you know, the key factor of all we do, to make that positive difference. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations. You're so awesome, you know that.
I just have to remind Councilman Coffin that the day, what was it, July 7th, 2011, this wonderful woman was sworn into office with us, and we were so proud. It was such a great moment, but to know what you have accomplished in these brief six years, and I know Cedric Kern, the entire, all your colleagues on the bench are so proud. And just for those of you who don't know and don't follow her, this wonderful judge is 24/7. There's a backlog. We could have 10 of her to keep up with everything, but trying to find the housing, the support system, it's just, it's grand. And you just look better than ever, and I don't know why. You should be exhausted. So, thank you for all that you do. This is a very special population that can full well be integrated into society again, and because of you, it's happening. Thank you. We appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you. Your turn, Councilman. May I tell a secret?
It won't be a secret anymore.
Oh. He's been married how many years?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven years married. You finally caught on. Bernadette said, "Go buy your own Christmas present." I love it!
I bought whatever I wanted. Thanks, Mayor. Well, good morning, everyone. It is my honor to recognize the Friends of the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department Foundation. I'd like to invite the Executive Director for the Foundation, Tom Kovak, to come down here, please. Give him a nice round of applause, Tom Kovak. And represent, oh, okay, we got a few people coming up here, okay. And Brett Zimmerman, representing Metro. Thanks for coming down. So, the Friends of the LVMPD is a nonprofit foundation established in 1999 as a destination for generous contributions benefiting the LVMPD safety initiatives. Thanks to donations over the years, hundreds of thousands of citizens across Clark County have been positively impacted by their efforts to keep our region safer. The foundation helps fund programs, including the F, every 15-minute safe driving program for new teenage drivers, Santa Cops mentoring program, and funds for updating safety equipment and other tools for the LVMPD specialized units. They also provide assistance for families of fallen officers, and many more programs that benefit neighborhoods across Clark County and the city of Las Vegas, helping prevent crime, save lives, and making our city a safer place to live, work, and play. The foundation raises money for different programs by donations, and I'm hoping you're gonna tell everybody how to donate today, selling dedication pavers, and putting on the annual Sheriff Salutes the Best of the Badge Gala and other foundation events. January 2017 is the first Go True Blue campaign by the foundation to build new partnerships between citizens, businesses, and the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. So, I'd like to ask Tom Kovak, the Executive Director of the foundation, to talk about the campaign.
Thank you, Councilman. It's a great honor to represent what is one of the most impactful organizations in the valley affecting community safety. I am joined not only by Deputy Chief Brett Zimmerman, but by three of the board members of our Board of Directors, Tom Lettia, to my right, Ron Corry, to my left, and Jordan Wertz, to his left. These three individuals represent a board of 15 people, and more broadly, represent a community of business and community leaders who believe in the importance of law enforcement, and more broadly, the importance of community safety. And so, for all of us, we are very thankful to the mayor and the city council for recognizing this campaign and our foundation. 2016 will be remembered as a year where more police officers were attacked across our nation than in any year in recent memory. The foundation and this campaign goes to support the men and women who sacrifice their lives every single day for the benefit of those of us who are not in law enforcement, which is, as you all know, the majority of our community. The foundation exists to provide critical funding for equipment to keep our officers and our community safe, as well as important community safety initiatives. Everything from programs like Santa Cops, which brings law enforcement out into the community to work as Santa Claus for those in our community, children in particular, whose families are unable to provide them with holidays that so many in our community enjoy. The foundation, because of the generosity of Ron Corry and his business partner, have been able to provide 10 scholarships for outstanding children of LVMPD officers and corrections officers. And in the true spirit that makes this nation so great, when public entities, private business, and the community come together to make our world a better place. A few years ago, the LVMPD Foundation provided seed money for body-worn cameras. This past budget cycle, the leadership of this council provided the opportunity for LVMPD to be fully equipped with body-worn cameras by the end of 2017. When that happens, LVMPD will be the first major city police department in the nation to be fully outfitted with body-worn cameras. So, that's a great example of the importance of the foundation, the importance of great leadership. And so, on behalf of Jordan, Ron, Brett, and Tom, thank you, Councilman, for this honor.
Thank you, Tom. You said that very well, and I have to say, as a retired Metro captain, I put this city at the top of the list in supporting our police officers, and firefighters, and corrections officers, and our city marshals. I mean, this city just, they love their cops, and you are a perfect example of volunteering your time to support them. And I really, really appreciate you doing that and putting this foundation together. And I'd like, now I'd ask Deputy Chief, my friend Brett Zimmerman, to say a few words on behalf of Metro.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. I guess I'm gonna date myself, because Captain Anthony, then Sergeant Anthony, was my training officer when I hired on in 1990. He did a great job. But where I'm going with this is, when I hired on, over the years, our vision has somewhat remained the same, and that's to be the safest community in America. That's LVMPD's vision. So, what we, we need to utilize the community, a point was made, is a majority of the community is not law enforcement. We have, you know, 1.7 to 2 million people now in Clark County, and we basically know that a very small amount of those people commit crime. So, we rely on the 1.7 or the 1.8 million of regular citizens, those who are out there and about, to work with us to decrease crime in our community. What this True Blue campaign is, now allowing citizens who wanna partake in support of Metro and support of all law enforcement agencies to be able to assist in a way, and show their support for law enforcement within the community. So, it's a great honor to be here. The LVMPD Foundation, like Director Kovach said, does a lot of good things out there in the community, besides support for the officers. Santa Cops, didn't get into it, but basically, every year, we find underprivileged children within the community and families, and we make a better Christmas for both the parents and the children. We have programs out there, every 15 minutes, they work with high school students on the dangers of drinking and driving. And what that entails is, they do a full reenactment of a DUI fatal accident to show how real drinking and driving can affect you as a student, your family members, your friends. But the LVMPD Foundation is a great program, and we also appreciate the support of the community out there, because without the community, we would not be successful. So, thank you.
Great.
Great. So, the Go True Blue Foundation kickoff happened last night, when City Hall was lit up blue. It will also be lit up blue tonight. I have a proclamation for you. Thank you. Proclaiming today, the Friends of LVMPD Foundation's Day of Day. Tom, if you could have that. And I think this Saturday, there's a law enforcement appreciation event at Police Memorial Park.
Yes.
That starts at noon, I think.
Yes, it's, the Police Memorial Park is out, um, Police Memorial Park is out off of Northwest Area Command, where our academy is, on West Cheyenne, about the 9,000 block. So, there's a kickoff there, and then also, the county will be partaking in the True Blue process. They're gonna turn the sign, the Las Vegas Sign Blue, entering into town, I believe, on Monday or Tuesday, on January 9th. So, everybody's participating, and we appreciate the support.
Great. And finally, Tom, I'm sure there's some people out there that might be interested in helping out your foundation. How can they contact you and help fund this?
Thank you for asking. So, if you're interested in supporting this campaign, or the foundation in general, and specifically, LVMPD, please visit our website, www.lvmpdfoundation.org. We greatly appreciate all the community's support throughout the year, and in particular, this January, the campaign goes the entire month, so please join us. Thank you.
Great. And then, what do we have here?
Hats.
Hats, okay. That's my hat, okay. I guess you guys can fight over these here. Oh, there's one for everybody? Oh, okay. Oh, great. All right, let's all put your hats on, and let's take a picture.
I don't want to measure hair.
I don't want to put that.
There you go. I don't have any hair, so it doesn't matter. All right, come on.
Come closer. Wait, Councilman Coffin asked to put the chef O on. Come in close.
Okay, good job. Thank you.
Okay, while we switch over our technology, it is 10:00 to 10:00. We will take a brief 10-minute recess here, so we can switch over and give council a chance to regroup, and we will start promptly at 10:00. (audio cuts out)
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'm calling all council personnel back to their seats. And while we're doing this, I just will share a secret with you all. It's my understanding that yesterday, Councilman Barlow had a birthday and turned big, 45?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Happy birthday.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's wonderful. Thank goodness I'm not twice your age. But we wish you a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful 2017 and 45.
Thank you, Mayor.
Carpe diem, as they say.
Carpe diem.
Make sure you take advantage of every day.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, we are at a quorum here, so we will move on with Agenda Item 9. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Public comment during this portion of the agenda, then, whoa. This portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address us on the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. We'll set the time at 1:00. Once again, the rush to the microphone is overwhelming, so we will close. Agenda Item 9. Oh, see, I'm so glad you came up. Good morning and Happy New Year.
Hello, son. Good morning, Mayor, City Council staff. I'm Alan Cartier, President of Cartier Insurance, 955 Yole Wood Drive. 1 minute's really quick for that, but I wanted to get an address number 37. I've had a talk with some of the others. I came here today to probably congratulate a local broker. Unfortunately, I see that's Arizona. I even know Chuck is here, but I want to give you some statistics. If you take the three largest brokers, Levitt, Craig &amp; Pike, and Cartier Insurance, combined them together, we have 250 years of community service in this city. And that means payroll, taxes, community service, and charity. So, when you look at that and you talk to that, here we go again, out of state, and we just did this last year. I didn't even get an opportunity or an audience to give an interview, so I'm going to say something a couple really quick. I studied 10 years of your claims. Brad and the City Council has done a really good job, and your attorney's done a good job. Betsy, I did the review of the insurance. You're going to have about a 20% savings and presumption benefits.
And given what Mr. Carter, I'm going to allow you to come back at number 37 and speak.
I just have one question, please.
Is it one sentence?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you, or should you, go and see the offices that are giving professional services to the city? We have over 50 employees. Chuck could tell you how many he has. But I look at that, I just can't believe it, that a business community can't even get an opportunity to work with the city that's been here that many years.
Thank you for your comments.
I was born here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? We will move on to Agenda Item 10. Business items for possible action. Any items the council, staff, and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, held in advance to a future meeting, may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilwoman.
You mean Councilman.
Well, my article, the script says Councilwoman, so I...
It's because I did it last time, I think.
Oh, right, because I was not here. I was somewhere.
It's okay, and Councilwoman did a fabulous job, too. So, thank you, Councilman. Yes, Your Honor...
Okay, so now Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, Your Honor. Staff has requested that Agenda Item 35, report by city staff regarding innovative mobility initiatives within the city's innovation district be stricken from the agenda. And the applicant has requested that Agenda Item 46, ROC 67688, applicant owner D.R. Horton Incorporated, on 15.47 acres at the northeast corner of La Madre Way and Maverick Street, be obeyed to the January 18th City Council meeting. That's my motion.
Thank you. And that was 46 on the second one, please?
Correct.
Okay. This is motion on two items, 35 and 46. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Could I just ask a question? What is our innovation, our city's innovation district? I'm sorry, but I...
What number are you speaking to?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. We struck 35. I just was, we have all kinds of names for things, and I just wanted to assure that I understood what it was.
Councilwoman, you may remember last year, we were working to apply for a Smart Cities grant through the federal government.
Yes.
And one of the things that we outlined in that grant is an innovation district that generally captures most of downtown. I'm happy to get you the map of that. It was approved as a resolution by the City Council last spring. And so, we've been working diligently over the course of the last 12 months to implement the ideas that are espoused in that resolution.
So, what you're doing is, we were applying for a grant, and we needed to have an innovation district to show what we could be able to do, and that's what it is? And you'll give me a map of it?
Yes, that's, I think that's close.
Well, that's very close.
There's a lot more going on in the innovation district than just a grant. But that was one of the things that was outlined in our grant application. And one of the things that I've discussed with the mayor and some of the council members is bringing back an informational item about all the things that we're doing in the innovation district next month. So, we're working on a more comprehensive item than the one that was prepared for you today to talk about all those different activities that are underway. And it's fairly lengthy. You know, we're putting in infrastructure that will accommodate automated vehicles. We are trying to make sure that we're staying on top of Wi-Fi in the downtown area, a whole host of activities that I think it'd probably be important to give council a comprehensive report on. So, we're working on that for February instead of today.
Good. That'll be very beneficial, I think, to all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number 11, and if I might ask, legal staff, I wasn't here, and I don't know whether the minutes are accurate. Do I abstain? Do I approve? What do I do?
Mayor, you can go forward on...
Go forward. Okay. So, I'm trusting council.
Trust us, ma'am.
I'm trusting. Okay. For possible action, to approve the final minutes by reference to the November 16th, 2016, ready city, regular city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes, Your Honor.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. And please post.
He's up to no good.
I just, he is. No, don't even go there. Don't even look at him. Don't go there. Okay.
In other words, keep looking forward.
Right. Okay, that motion carries. We'll go on to Agenda. Where are we, 12? Agenda Items 12 through 32 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Note that the record should reflect my abstention in Item 29 because it pertains to medical, marijuana-related business, and one of my sons is involved in that industry. I will be voting on the other items. Are there any items council wishes to bring forward? Councilman Coffin and Barlow, any items out of this pack you want brought forward? You're clean. Okay, how about down to the right? Silence, good. Okay, go, please.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the consent agenda item with all staff recommendations.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on Agenda Items 12 through 32. Please vote and please post. Agenda Item 33, administrative. Report by John Enslinger, General Manager for the Southern Nevada Water Authority and the Las Vegas Valley Water District regarding the efforts the agencies are undertaking to address the unique water needs in Southern Nevada. This is in reference to all wards. And you are supposed to be introduced by Mr. Olivas, but I don't see Mr. Olivas. Don't you want to say something wonderful and nice? He's a hardworking man here. Okay. Okay. So, we'll go this one again. Hello, good morning. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, Ted Olivas, Chief of Staff. This is an item that we've had some discussions on for about the last six months. Water, of course, is an important issue to Southern Nevada. It's something that is going to be big from a legislative perspective, from a federal perspective, and so we thought that it would be appropriate to get an update from Mr. Enslinger on exactly what's going on currently. We do have representatives on the Southern Nevada Water Authority, but we thought that a presentation to the entire mayor and council would be appropriate.
Thank you very much. And for the viewing public, there is a show called Hello Mayor that I host through KCLV Cable Channel 2. And I was fortunate enough to have Mr. Enslinger on the show, and so sometimes we repeat shows, but really informative. It was so informative that after 40 years in our home, we ripped out all the lawn. So, I want you to know, the words he speaks are really truthful, and he'll end up giving you a website way to get more information if you have any questions. So, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you this morning. I have, I hope, a relative... I have, I hope, a relatively brief presentation on some things that are going on at the Las Vegas Valley Water District, which is the retail agency for most of Clark County and the city of Las Vegas. But if you would like me to address anything going on more at the regional level with the Southern Nevada Water Authority, I'm happy to do that as well.
And physically, just back up that one picture, please. Physically, where is that facility located?
That is the pump station that's actually located at the Las Vegas Springs Preserve that pushes water up into the western part of the Las Vegas Valley.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Very impressive and clean.
We try to keep all of our facilities very clean. So the Las Vegas Valley Water District was created by the state legislature in the mid-1950s. It is a not-for-profit political subdivision of the state of Nevada, and our job is to provide safe, reliable water to 1.4 million residents here in Southern Nevada every day. Most of our stuff, you're not going to see. Over 80% of our facilities are underground, and most of the other 20% are behind cinder block walls, but we have a very robust water delivery system. We have over 6500 miles of pipe, over a billion gallons in reservoir, and the physical capacity to pump about 900 million gallons of water a day through our system. But taking care of a system like that is obviously pretty capital intensive. We are blessed with a relatively young water system. We're not facing some of the same challenges that you see back east in terms of replacing lead service laterals and cast iron mains, but a lot of our stuff has been in the ground since the 1940s, 1950s, so our capital plan over the next 10 years calls for investment in that infrastructure of about $390 million over that 10-year period. We also need to build some new facilities, and I'll show you a map of where those facilities are going to be located. And then we also have $100 million slotted for water quality protection in the next 10 years, and I'll explain exactly what that's going for. So in the water business, you really need to be proactive. If we simply sit and wait for mains to break, it's going to shut down businesses, it's going to interrupt people's homes. So we have a very proactive leak detection system to get in and fix these pipes. You can see our guys, you know, those guys are each, you know, about six foot tall, so you can tell they're down in 30, 40-foot hole. Again, most of our stuff is pretty deep underground to be able to get in and fix this stuff. This map shows over the past five years, we've had over 2,100 lateral breaks. And again, that can shut down businesses, be very disruptive, so we are budgeting $70 million over the next 10 years to get in and replace these laterals, really in the older parts of town. You can see from the map there, red is bad, so in the older parts of the valley, that's where we're seeing these types of lateral breaks and where we need to get in and make this reinvestment in the water delivery system. Also critical are our vaults and the valves that are within those vaults. If you remember the situation, a year or two ago in front of UCLA where they couldn't find the valve to shut down, and the water ran for almost three days, hugely disruptive to the city of Los Angeles. So keeping, knowing where our valves are, knowing where our vaults are, and keeping them in good repair allows us to shut down sections of the water system as necessary to make repairs. Another big project over the next 10 years...
Can I just ask you, could you go back one, back this one?
This one?
Yes. I'm looking at Ward 1. And is there a dot right there? Or is that not my ward? Maybe it's the county's. But anyway, I was interested in what you said. The oldest part of the city seems to be having the most problems, and yet to me, it looks as if it's not the oldest part, it's the red. Am I wrong? I mean, for example, the, what I represent is, doesn't have any red. Yeah, but which is unusual because it's so old. Okay, going across the way to Mr. Coffin's ward, do you have a whole lot of red?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
On the eastern, the far east.
I got the far east. Okay, so really, the central part of the city doesn't seem to have much red. I was just interested in that because I thought it would have more.
Right, and so I probably should have been a little more specific and detailed when I, when I said the older part of town. The way our asset management planning works, we always have a 10-year capital plan, you know, that we show to the board and is funded, but we also have 20- and 100-year NSE curves, which project out how long your, what repairs to the system you're going to need to make over a 20- and 100-year period. So the reason you don't see a lot of red right around the Las Vegas Strip and the I-15 corridor is because that's the stuff we've been replacing over the last 10 to 20 years.
So you've been facing...
So the stuff you see breaking now is probably the stuff that was installed more in, you know, the 60s and 70s.
After that, then you've done a good job of keeping it up because, I mean, we have, we have very old schools even, you know, and it is excellent. It's excellent, the maintenance that you've done, because that is at one of the oldest parts of town, right by the Springs Preserve, and is part of it, and of course, it goes north and south. But anyway, you've done a good job. I just wanted to make that comment.
I appreciate it, and it's a testament to the men and women that work for me, the field crews that are out there every single day. We lose less than 5% of the water that we deliver every single day, which is world-class, you know, by any major industry standard is between 15 and 20%. So to be able to pump 900 million gallons of water a day and lose less than 5% of that is pretty outstanding.
Less than 5%. Wow.
And Councilman Beers would like to make comment or ask you a question, please.
Yeah, we don't let anybody who shows us a map off easy.
I will remember that in the future.
Could you define service lateral for me? This is a portrait just of service lateral breaks. What exactly is that?
Okay, so we have pipes in our system that range in size from 5/8 of an inch up to 144 inches. I would generally describe a service lateral as being between 4 inches and 36 inches.
So bigger than the pipe from the main in my street to my house.
Right.
More likely a side pipe from a big pipe that might feed my whole subdivision.
Exactly. Really going down, largely going down a major thoroughfare.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to ask our city manager, and knowing sewer, we have gone ahead with a connecting fee insurance that's available to the public to protect that cost, sewer hookup. Is that something that we should be looking into for these lateral breaks that might cause?
Where is this red dot? Mayor, we can certainly share that sewer lateral warranty service that we have a partnership with, with the water district, to see if it has applicability. My understanding is that the water laterals are treated differently than the sewer laterals, but I'm happy to sit down with John and talk with him about that.
I would like to see that because the damage, while all of us probably have insurance if we own property, against that, sometimes the deductible is so large that maybe an insurance program might be something some company wants to get into, and that might help. So if you would have that conversation, Betsy, I appreciate it. Thank you.
We do, for the water district, we have responsibility for maintenance up to and including the meter. So all the laterals on our side of the meter, everything it takes to get water to the meter on the homeowner or the business's property, if it breaks, we're responsible for fixing it. If something, if there's a leak or a pipe break on the homeowner's side of the meter, they're responsible for that. So I do think you could probably look at a rider on your homeowner's insurance or something of that nature, but I don't think it's the magnitude of what the city is engaged with on the sewer side.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Please continue.
Okay, so I talked about the vaults and the valves. Another big project, a lot of interest to the city of Las Vegas, I'm sure, over the next 10 years, is we're going to look to replace the major pipes in Las Vegas Boulevard from Charleston in the north to the 215 in the south, because those are getting up there in age. The same 90-inch pipeline that's running down the Boulevard that provided water service to the El Rancho is still sitting there providing water service to the Strip today. So that is a major thing that we're working on with city staff, with county staff, with RTC, because we don't just want to be the ones to go up and tear up the Boulevard. As other agencies go in to repave, as private industry like Resort World goes in and does all the work in front of their new hotel, we want to get in there and replace the pipe while the street's already torn up to minimize disruptions in that resort corridor. So about $50 million for that pipe replacement, obviously a pretty big piece of our 10-year capital plan. So this just sort of summarizes the major components of our asset management plan over the next 10 years. I think I've touched on most of those. The second major component of our...
Your Honor, Your Honor. I'm sorry, I was waiting to the end of the presentation, but I think this is the best time to say that your asset management program is outstanding, and in fact, you've shared it with the city. In other words, there was a very good accounting method, and our folks have looked at it, and you've sent people over to explain it. And I think it's very good because the problem with the water system is the same for everything else in the city. You're 80% underground, so are we on the other side of things with the sewer, both storm sewers as well as, you know, sanitary sewers, and you've got to spend a lot of money. And I just got, I just got hung by my wife yesterday because she was yelling at me about the new rate for water delivery, which isn't all that big, but the point is that. It is big if you don't have any money, but the main thing is you've got the water, and you have been able to spend the money because you've got it from the ratepayers because you can get it. Our difficulty is trying to get it from the taxpayers because we have a heck of a problem with our aging infrastructure. So if, in the city and the county, so if we look at the tax problems we have and the inability to fix things, we should admire you because you've got the source of money. And really, I wish we had the same ability to raise the money in the city. It costs a hell of a lot more to fix them after they break than it does before, you know, if you've been proactive, as you've pointed out, John. So, yeah, I've enjoyed serving with, with the committee, the commission for five years with the authority, and I've been most impressed with how you maintain the assets, that you intercept the damage in great measure before it really happens. And yet, we only hear about it when there is a sinkhole and a, but think how many there would be if, if you didn't spend the money. And I wish we had the money to spend for our responsibilities, but at least you're showing a good example for what you're responsible for.
Well, thank you for the kind words, Councilman. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the community, and I don't just mean the elected officials that sit on the water district and at the water authority, but we've had four citizens' advisory committees just in the last seven years, and on every one of those, the community has come together and unanimously recommended not only to raise rates in order to pay for this critical infrastructure, but the manner in which to do it. And I think if we look across our country, there's not too many examples of communities and the democratic process reaching unanimity the way our community has been able to do in order to support a safe and reliable water system. So getting into water quality, and Councilman Coffin, this is probably another one that you'll remember, I think you were in the assembly when the mandate was passed to install backflow prevention devices on every commercial building in the state. So we've been working on that diligently for the last several years, but realistically, we're looking at probably at least another 20 years of installing these on each building to get to full compliance with that statutory requirement. So a backflow prevention device does exactly what it says. If you have water inside of a building and the power goes out, all that water flushes back out into the potable water system. And if you have antifreeze in a fire suppression system or just plain old, you know, water in the toilet, that's not something you want backwashing into your potable water system. So a backflow prevention device stops that from occurring. So we're budgeting $10 million a year for the next 10 years to keep installing these devices on commercial buildings. And I know this is Betsy's favorite thing that we do, but we do have a process set up between my staff and her staff to minimize the disruption of installing those devices, especially in your redevelopment areas. We'll try to keep them as absolutely low-profile as possible, but a very important component to the water system to protect the water quality. And then, new infrastructure. You know, from 1992 to 2007, we averaged bringing a new reservoir online once a quarter. Since 2007, we haven't built or brought online a new reservoir or a new pump station. So we think in the next 10 years, as the growth continues out into the west, south, and north parts of the valley, as shown on this map, we are going to need four new pump stations, four new reservoirs in order to support that growth out there. So I mentioned citizens advisory committees. We, our board convened a committee in February.
Excuse me, Mr. Enslinger.
It was a map.
Right. You clawed on quickly. Go.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I understand the high growth in the blue. I'm not quite sure I'm understanding what it is that is outlined in the yellow there. It looks like a part of the city limits line, but it's bigger than the city limits.
That is the service territory of the Las Vegas Valley Water District.
Las Vegas Valley Water.
So we provide water service within the city boundaries and unincorporated Clark County. So that's why the yellow boundary is bigger than the city.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'm sorry, a good idea to remember, remind people the difference between the district and the authority, because your member, me, serves on the authority, which includes the entire valley. It is just that the district, which is the county commissioner's direct authority, they control what's in yellow. But everybody else has their own voting, I think. Is that how it works, John?
Right, so the city of North Las Vegas has their own water utility, the city of Henderson has their own, so they're not highlighted on this. The yellow outline, including the blue, is just the service territory of the Las Vegas Valley Water.
It's always good to remind everybody, including us, that the authority is the wholesaler in the district.
But in fact, controlled by the county is what you're saying.
Yeah, the wholesaler is the authority, and you have a representative, but you don't have a representative on the district, even though much of the real estate is exactly the same. That's accurate.
Thank you.
So the, our governing board put citizens advisory committee in place in February. You know, we had NAOP, we had the chamber, we had the urban chamber, a couple of just, you know, everyday citizens sitting on the committee, representatives of the environmental community. So I believe a really representative cross-section of the community was on this committee. And what they were really looking at is how are we going to continue to make these investments, but doing it in as fair and equitable a way across our community as possible? So they ultimately looked at 15 different rate scenarios, they took tours of our facilities, and some of the things they looked at, some of our rates and charges hadn't been adjusted in more than 10 years. Customers that are having these backflow prevention devices that I described installed currently aren't paying into that program. You only pay into that program after you have one of those devices installed. They wanted to look at attaching rates to a CPI. The way we've historically done rates and really how utilities, not just water, but power, gas, usually you go five, six years without doing anything, and then you reward the community with a 25%, 30% rate increase. They wanted a lot more predictability, they wanted it to be a lot more incremental, so really driven by the business community, wanted to take a look at attaching water rates to a CPI. How to use bonds? How much should we do in Pago? How much additional debt should we sell in order to finance all of these facilities? And then they really narrowed down to year of implementation. If we started this year, obviously it would be a smaller increase, but even more immediate. If we wait until next year, it would be a bigger increase, but you would have a year without it. Again, how much debt would be issued, how quickly we achieve our reserve targets. Our board has established reserve targets for us. We're at about 75% of those targets right now, so do you get to 100% in five years? Do you get there in 10 years? All that came into it. So that distilled down, this isn't all 15 scenarios, but the scenario they ultimately selected was to turn it on February 17. selected was to turn it on February 17, so next month, 3% of year one, 3% year two, and CPI thereafter. Finance these facilities through 50% Pago and 50% sale of bonds, and then increase the connection charge, the facility's connection charge, by 7.5% for four years in a row, and then also attach that to CPI. And that was actually the proposal of the Southern Nevada Home Builders Association to do it that way. So what does all that mean? For a typical single-family residential home, you'll see an increase of about 75 cents per month in year one, and then similar increases going out. This is largely driven by how much water you use. So you see a major gaming resort, that major gaming resort, that's actually Bellagio's water bill. So theirs is going to go up $11,000 over the course of those three years, whereas a warehouse uses hardly any water, so their bill will only go up $7 a month. So it's purely volumetric. Even once it's implemented, our water rates here are right at the 50th percentile for the 65 City Western Index, so we remain very competitive from a retail water rate perspective. I don't think water is going to be a deciding factor in any business expanding or relocating to the Las Vegas Valley. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, or I'll expand into more of the Southern Nevada Water Authority stuff if you'd like me to.
Thank you, Mr. Anslinger. Could we have a copy of those, of the map and that last data sheet that you have, the comparator, or maybe just the report?
Absolutely. I believe you guys have the jump drive with the presentation on it, so if you want any backup information, please let me know.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Anslinger, thank you very much for that presentation. Now, I want to ask you a fundamental question I get all the time. You know, the Northwest is continuing to boom quite robustly. You showed that in one of your graphics there in regards to the need for more pump stations and reservoirs. And I asked your predecessor this many, many years ago as well, when do we say, say, stop to development because we're running out of water? Can you answer that question? I know that's not part of your report, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I get that a lot.
Sure.
And I try to reassure our residents that we have plenty, because we're probably the most water-conservative city in the nation, I would say. Can you address some of that a little bit for us as well, through the air, of course?
Yeah, absolutely. And I would encourage, as the mayor said, on her program, we went into a lot of that in detail. So I'll give a short version, but there's a longer version pretty readily available. Water is not a restricting factor in the economic growth of our community. We, in the last 15 years, have reduced our per capita consumption by 43%. We've reduced our aggregate consumption by 37%, and that's in the same timeframe that our population has increased by over half a million people. So you can have economic growth and use less water. The question isn't, do you grow? It's how you grow. If you can use minimal amounts of water outdoors, if you minimize particularly the amount of turf that's being installed, there's not really a limit to how much our water supply can support, because we recycle 99.9% of everything that hits a drain. If you want to leave every fountain or every shower, every sink running on the Las Vegas Strip 365 days a year, we recycle that water, we, you know, give it back to the community that doesn't consume any water. Now, there are good reasons to conserve indoors. It saves electrical power, it saves chemicals, but it doesn't expand our portfolio at all to conserve indoors. So I agree with you. With our new third intake that became operational in September of 2015, with the low-lake level pumping station that will be completed by 2020, and with world-leading conservation efforts, I firmly believe that Las Vegas is the most water-secure city in the western United States.
If I can, Your Honor.
Your Honor?
Councilman, Mayor Protem's going to finish up, and then back to you.
Thank you for that. You highlighted some very important aspects of where we are today, but in this, because of the drought we've experienced in the southwest, you know, you see lakes drying up in California, boats sitting on the bottom of dried-up lake beds. I mean, that's a scary situation. And I know we get our watershed mostly from the Colorado Rockies head in this direction, and I think that's significant to highlight as well. But your team, I mean, everyone in Southern Nevada has done such a fabulous job. I know our sustainability initiative at the city of Las Vegas is, you know, top-shelf and should be a model to follow, but world-class, you hit it on the head. So I appreciate that, and appreciate your answers. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. And Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. By the way, was that one of our authority staff members that did this illustration that you capted with here?
We use that for both. As you know, the authority and the district largely have combined staff.
I just want to make sure it's one of our own artists.
We're using this in the authority's water conservation campaign, but we're also using it in the district's, they call it water awareness campaign. A lot of people have no idea where their water comes from, so the design there, the artwork, showing how we're all connected-
Well, it just shows you, it illustrates better than the words. We talk about how much is underground. I think it's classic. I've never seen this before, and I would like a high-res jump drive or possibly somehow mail one to us, so we can make large, poster-sized-
Yeah, this is brand-new. I think we produced this since the last authority meeting, so we have just come up with this.
Well, it says more than anything I could say, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd like to ask a couple of questions. And first of all, Mr. Riegelman, can we get on rotation again to re-show the interview on Hello Mayor that we had with-
Of course.
-Mr. Anslinger, and that would show on a Monday at what time?
It airs the third Monday of every month. That's the new show, but we can run it in the interim as often as we'd like.
I thought it was so informative. One of the questions that I asked you, and I know Israel has been leadership in this, the use of desalinization, and knowing you've already been meeting with the seven surrounding states, the chair, the Colorado, and knowing we have the Pacific Ocean sitting out there, is there conversation about desalinization? I mean, I hear all the time, oh, it's way too expensive, but if they're doing it in other parts of the world, what about us?
Yes. We've had conversations with the other states, you know, particularly Arizona and California. We've had discussions with the country of Mexico. I think probably the single most attractive site for a major desal plant, and I'm talking 100,000 acre feet plus, is probably Rosarita Beach just to the north of Tijuana. There's already a major electrical power facility located there. The question isn't really the viability of the technology or our ability to make the investment and move the water back up. I mean, you wouldn't physically move the water back up, but you would do exchanges with California and Mexico. The question is, when do we need to make that investment? Because we're only using about 2/3 of our legal entitlement to the river. We have over eight years of water, our current water supplies, in reserves. So to invest in something like that, you're talking about probably about a $2 billion capital investment and significantly higher operation and maintenance costs than we have right now. So that would be, you know, I just showed you a rate increase to take care of the system, basically, that we already have. That would be, you know, a fairly significant burden on the rate base to invest in something like that. So I believe it's possible out into the future. I just don't think we're in a position where the community needs to make that investment right now.
How about, though apropos of Mayor Protem's comment, the recreational use and the water level that continues to recede out at Lake Mead? Are we going to see that recover at all before, and isn't that a consideration for us?
Well, only Mother Nature can say when the lake level is going to come back up. The lake level's driven almost exclusively by how much snow you're getting on the west slope of the Rocky Mountains. But to give you some context, the entire amount of water we use in one year equals about 2 feet in Lake Mead. So what we do isn't the driving factor. It's what California, Arizona, and the country of Mexico are doing that really drives the fluctuations in Lake Mead levels and building-
So what are we doing about that?
We're securing our delivery mechanisms. By building the third intake, by building the new low-lake level pumping station, we will be able to pump from what's called Deadpool. So at a certain point, if the lake keeps going down, you get to an elevation where the Bureau of Reclamation cannot release water from behind Hoover Dam. That means 25 million people from Santa Barbara to San Diego, 5 million people in central Arizona, don't have access to water from the Colorado River. But our facilities will still have 30 feet of water over them at the point where the Bureau can't release water. So water will continue to impound behind Hoover Dam, and we will be able to deliver our community with water, even in a worst-case hydrologic situation.
So in the worst-case scenario, how much further down, assuming we continue to enjoy the weather we're enjoying, and there's no additional flow off the western side of the Rockies, for those who use Lake Mead recreationally, their preparation to do with what they're doing, what do you see in the forecast?
Well, again, the forecast is going to be, we're actually seeing pretty good snow in western Colorado, southern Wyoming this year, so hopefully we're going to have an above-average year, and we'll see those lake levels come up. Again, worst-case scenario, you could see the lake continue to decline, but it physically can't decline past 900 feet above sea level, again, because at that point, you're just impounding water.
Where is it now?
It is at 1075. So we're about 175 feet above that elevation.
Thank you. I think Councilman Viers, you had something? I'm sorry.
You know, I think I've forgotten, or you answered it, but you thought the growth rate here in the 90s was exciting. Just wait till the only water coming off the Colorado is coming off our third intake. We're going to have a lot of new neighbors quickly, I would suspect.
We're going to have an extremely safe water delivery system. We can handle whatever you throw at us, but we probably, you know, would rather not have quite that high of a level of growth in any one year.
Did anyone else besides me go tour the third intake before they blew off the top? I did. Yeah, that was awesome. That's an amazing feat of engineering you guys pulled off.
No, the men and women that built that project, tip of the hat. The community, those of them, thanks for, you know, for a long time to come.
Thank you very much, and we do thank all of you who worked on that project. It's fabulous. Hopefully you will make, continue to keep a surprise of everything. And again, to please watch that Hello Mayor segment when it comes on, because it was, you were so informative to me. It changed our lives and really made a difference. So thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
And, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say, we serve on these different committees, and before Mr. Coffin was on the committee, Southern Nevada Water Authority, I was on it, and I was on there when we needed to make the vote for the third intake. And I remember the consternation of all the money that was going to be involved, and people who said it wouldn't be possible. And it took a little bit of courage to vote for that, but now it's wonderful to see how everybody's saying how it's going to save for us, how it's going to be ours, for in the future. I just say that to the elected officials, to show that some of these really tough votes are important, well, they are important, but how successful they can be. We have that courage.
Well, I do remember the Performing Arts Center.
Right.
The Mob Museum, very unpopular votes at the time.
Right, right.
So you're on a roll with all your unpopular votes. Keep going.
Keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year to your entire team. Thank you. That was a report, so no motions required on that. We'll move on to agenda item 34. Discussion for possible action, ratification of Ally Haynes Hamlin as the Director of the Office of Cultural Services, $120,000 annual salary benefits general fund. Hello, Happy New Year.
Hi, Mayor. Members of the council, I'm Betsy Grettwell. I'm your city manager. Before I jump into this item, I would like to say a couple of things. One, a few months ago, Nancy Deener retired, and we acknowledged her here at City Council for her service. I'd like to say thank you to Robin McCartney, who's sitting out in the audience. He took the reins as the acting interim manager for that department. I think it's a real testament to the leadership training function that Scott Adams and Patsy McFadden-Chode have put together for our organization to help us deal with the Silver Tsunami, which we've talked about, having very key positions in our organization vacated due to retirements, because we have a lot of people eligible for retirement. And I just want to say thank you to Robin for stepping up and leading away and paving a way for our new Director of Cultural Affairs to walk in and take over the reins and really lead this organization into the future. And so with that, I'd like to invite Ally up. Ally, come on up. Ally Haynes Hamlin is my recommendation to you for our new Cultural Affairs Director. Ally comes to us from Scottsdale, and I'd like to just read a few things about her, because she's an impressive candidate. And as you all know, we used a national search firm, we had candidates from across the country, they were all well-vetted, we had an outside panel help us, shortlist candidates, and Ally rose to the top. And I think it's important for you to know why. I felt that she's the best fit for our organization and is the right person to lead Cultural Affairs into the future. One, she's got experience with performing arts in an incredible passion for that. She's been the Director of the Scottsdale Center for Performing Arts, and she's been there since 2004, holding various levels of, positions of levels of responsibility over that, the course of those 12 years. She's been responsible for managing all the performing arts programming, production, operations, and their finances. She's managed a staff of 80 people, of full and part-time positions, with nearly 750 volunteers, and an annual budget of around $6 million. She's managed four venues in Scottsdale, including indoor and outdoor facilities with capacity ranging from 2,000 to a smaller black box theater of over 130. Her prior position to the one she held in Scottsdale was an associate producer and general manager of a theater company in New York. New York, New York, Mayor, as in hometown-ish for you. She is nationally recognized for her strategic partnerships, and I think that's critically important, given the emphasis that our council has placed on strategic partnerships, particularly in the arts, whether it's with museums, our Performing Arts Center, working with Myron and many others in the community, to take our level of arts and culture to a new level here in the city of Las Vegas. Some other key highlights that I'd like to expand on. One, she was recognized for her work in 2015 by the Chandler Center for the Art Alliance with the Katrina Pappas Award. She's been a Leadership Fellow in the Association of the Performing Arts Presenters in LA. She also was in the developing artistic entrepreneurship class in 2015 in Edinburgh, Scotland. And in 2013, she was the Western Arts Alliance Darlene Neal Mentoring Awardee. These are significant accomplishments, I think, for someone joining our team, and I'm really proud of what she's been able to accomplish in her prior capacity. She also comes to us with a great deal of educational experience. She has an MBA with honors from Regis University and a Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of Denver with a double major in communications and theater. Ally really inspired me when she was going through this interviewing process. She has done some incredible strategic partnerships, and I just wanted to highlight one that really stuck with me, with the Brain Injury Association. Now, some people may not put those two things together, performing arts and brain injuries, and she might be one of the few that's ever done it. And she was able to put together an entire approach, got grant support, and has created a strategic alliance that's very unique. And I'm really proud of that. Those are the kinds of things that make us a great city, those kinds of unique, out-of-the-box thinking examples. And that's what Ally did in Phoenix. And I found that to make her a very attractive candidate and one of the key, one of the examples of why I think she will be a good leader for us. I'm really excited for her to start her work here at the city of Las Vegas in the Office of Cultural Affairs. She's incredibly talented. We have great expectations for her. The whole team from OCA is here in the back to show their support. Robin, hats off to you for your leadership in the interim. And Ally, we welcome you with open arms, and we're excited for what you bring to our city. And I'll turn it over to the mayor and council for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Well, we certainly welcome you. That's a wonderful Vita, and just, you can feel Ms. Grettwell's energy and excitement about having found you. So with that, I'll turn this over for questions or comments, anything, anybody here?
Just like I said, it's very exciting, and I'm glad that we're all going to be part of it.
Wonderful. Okay, Mayor Protem?
With a resume like that, and with all of the exciting things and the direction the city's going, Ally, I would make a motion to approve your ratification. That's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion to ratify the hiring of this lovely lady. And please vote and please post. And without a doubt, now's the time for you to say- please post, and without a doubt, now's the time for you to say something. You're ratified, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, I just want to, I just want to say, I know Betsy and her team had a nice array of very qualified candidates, so I'm really humbled and honored that you all have selected me. I really appreciate it. I'm excited to come here and get started. I promise I will work tirelessly to make sure that you are continuing to be confident in your decision to me. Thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful. And team, thank you. Yes, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you. I met Ally this morning. I say, Ally, the thing is, is that I live downtown, just a few hundred yards from the Arts District, and believe me, I hear everything about what goes on down there, always what's not right, you know? So, you'll have to hear about it. I hope you'll hear about it first before it comes to me. So, you have to wrangle that posse of arts commissioners and get with them, because they are all independent minds and they just, sometimes they know what they're talking about, so you've got to be careful. In any event, really welcome to downtown. I live so close that you cannot escape me if there's something going on, so I suggest wards 1, 3, and 5 have a little piece of the stuff you work with, so be sure to touch base with the wards 1, 3, and 5. You'll find out why when you, as soon as you assume your office.
Mayor, might be important if Ms. Grettwell assigned a marshal to Ally?
Absolutely. But we are, we are very culturally focused, and there's no city in history that doesn't have a cultural base. That's the most critical piece. So, we look forward to your helping us build ours and making it a world-renowned level culture. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Okay. Yeah. Okay, we've stricken 35, so we're on to 36. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Award of Contract Number 170092-DS-SK Major League Soccer and Stadium Project Economic Urban Development Award Recommended to Inner Circle Sports LLC Not to Exceed $200,000 Redevelopment Agency Special Revenue Fund. And so we have a twosome. Go for it.
Well, actually, I was here, since this is a finance contract, I wanted to tell you before you is the contract with Inner Circle Sports related to Major League Soccer, and Bill Arndt, the Director of Economic and Urban Development, is here to give you the background on that contract.
Thank you, Ms. Appleyard.
Thank you, Venetta. Good morning, mayor and council. For the record, Bill Arndt, Economic and Urban Development. This item is a professional services agreement with Inner Circle Sports. David Abrams is going to be joining me at the dais in just a moment. I do have some changes to read into the record regarding the agenda item itself. The agenda item was listed for the funding source as not to exceed $200,000-Redevelopment Agency Special Revenue Fund, and it should read not to exceed $80,000-City Parkway, Roman numeral 5, Inc. And similarly, the recommendation from staff of the City Council, approve award of contract number 170092-SK Major League Soccer and Stadium Project to Inner Circle Sports, come LLC, and the not to exceed amount of, and strike $200,000 and replace that with $80,000. The reason for that is we've approached this endeavor in phases. There's an opportunity today with Major League Soccer, who's soliciting interest from communities around the country, and we wanted to show you the full scope of work that this consultant and vendor might do over the course of time, but the initial work that's needed to be done is encompassed in Phase 1 in the agreement.
Is there a timeline on that?
There is a timeline, and there's, Mayor, with your indulgence, there's a couple more additional changes, and then I'll explain the timeline and invite Mr. Abrams up to the dais. In the opening paragraph of the agreement, the contract says that this contract is being entered into this 28th day of December 2016, and now that we're before you in 2017, purchasing is asked, and we concur that it should be changed, this contract is being entered into this 4th day of January 2017. On the second page of the agreement, under Section C-1 Company Responsibilities, we'd like to replace the opening paragraph with the following. With the execution of this contract, the company agrees to provide the services described in Phase 1 of the scope of services and proposal, Exhibit A attached here, too. The services described in Phases 2, 3, and 4 will be provided only if a contract modification to this contract is approved by the City Council and the company. Similarly, on Page 12, Exhibit A has been changed to reflect the separation of Phases 1 and 2, and on Page 12, that change should read as follows. The second paragraph, I'd like to replace that paragraph with the following. It is anticipated that this project will be structured in several phases. The city will retain Inner Circle Sports for Phase 1 in the scope of work below, which is designed to lead a successful MLS outcome for the city of Las Vegas with the option to implement Phase 2, Phase 3, and/or Phase 4 upon execution of a modification to this contract and approval of the City Council. Phase 1 is expected to be completed in a maximum of 12 weeks from the date of award. Phase 2 will be subsequent to Phase 1 and be on a month-to-month basis for a six-month period. That concludes the changes that I need to read into the record, and again, the reason for this is we've had a lot of back and forth with our consultant, Inner Circle Sports, on how we should pursue this endeavor, and what's needed really now is a marketing effort to approach individual owners and potential owners of a Major League Soccer franchise in the Las Vegas market. A number of communities around the country are going through a similar process and are at various stages in the process, and we need this business marketing summary to market to individual team owners that might have an interest in owning a franchise in Las Vegas. We have been approached by a number of groups over the years, and of course, as you know, worked with a prior company who were, was pursuing this endeavor, but this is really needed to advance the case for soccer in Las Vegas and work with an individual team owner moving forward. With that, I'd like to invite Mr. Abrams up to the dais. He has a brief presentation, which is really going to kind of give a review, if you will, of why Major League Soccer in Las Vegas is a great opportunity and just cover some of the nuances of what all that is about. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Abrams.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor.
Part of the family.
So, this one. Mayor, Happy New Year, and City Council members, Happy New Year. Thank you for having me. Appreciate being here.
And your name again for the record.
David Abrams with Inner Circle Sports. I apologize for that. Before you is a short presentation about MLS and the progress that they've made since they have come into the league, or since they created their league 20 years ago. This is something we've used to educate people about soccer in the United States, but it's a global sport, as you would know. And I'd ask you a question, I asked Bill this while we were sitting down earlier, so if you were, someone was to ask you, what is the most televised soccer event in, or soccer in the United States, what would you answer? And without asking you to answer it and put you on the spot, most people would think it's Manchester United, a lot of the European Premier League, but it turns out it's Univision's broadcast of Liga Max, Liga Max. So, there's an enormous change in viewership and participation in soccer by people that speak Spanish and people from south of the border here. And I think it's important to notice that the demographics of soccer, which you have embraced and which we discussed here many times over the past few years, is a, it's a millennial sport, it's a sport that is a urban population, it's a young, young folks, it's consumed in many, many ways, not just through television, but through participation and through various computer screens, phones, and in addition to television. So, with that, let me just sort of go over with you a little bit about MLS key events and MLS history. Again, the league is about 20 years old. There's been a huge change in ownership in MLS, whereas the Crafts, the Hunts, and the Anshutes were the three owners of MLS, the first original eight teams. There's been a large diversification in ownership and participation in MLS across the United States. In 1989, we ended 40 years of World Cup futility. In the past few years, we've had a huge movement towards participation in world soccer, in the world soccer stage. This has brought forth enormous interest in some of the larger cities and medium-sized cities in soccer, both from a participatory level and a professional soccer level at MLS, at USL Pro, and in NASL. And you can look at the percentage of 12- to 17-year-olds with avid interest by league. It is a very, very important sport for that age demographic. The growth of Major League Soccer has been initialized by, again, I mentioned Lamar Hunt, Philip Anshutes, Robert Kraft. When the league started expanding, we saw other owners of professional sports invest because they saw value. There has been this movement towards soccer-specific stadia and a change in owner operators from the original three. In 2016, in the league's 21st season, MLS had 20 teams competing throughout the US and Canada. This is the map of soccer teams in MLS right now. As you can see, there's a high concentration in sort of the northeastern part of the United States and in the southwest. I think that in Nevada, it would be, you see this star there, potential expansion markets. That expansion front has become very crowded recently, and I think you will agree that there are many cities that are looking to invest in what they view as a very, very profitable sport, not just profitable from a revenue standpoint, but from engaging the An elite group of business leaders and sports investors have invested in soccer, both internationally and in the United States, some of the names that I have mentioned already, but in addition to that, Stan Kronke, who owns the new LA Rams franchise, and also the Denver Nuggets and the Colorado Avalanche, Arthur Blank, his franchise, the Atlanta FC, will start next year, Rogers Communications, the owners of Man City, and the Yankees own New York City FC, the Polad family and the Taylor family in Minnesota, and additionally, you see others here listed. There's quite a number. The diversification of ownership is global at this point for soccer, and so we're seeing capital flowing in from all over the globe to invest in soccer in the United States, as well as soccer in Europe and in our, in our countries to the south. Attendance trends continue to improve, and as I know, you've seen here in front of, in front of this body several times, the growth in soccer attendance has been astronomical, and it's not just Seattle Sailors packing 40,000 in. We're seeing a tremendous movement upwards in, in both participation and in attendance in soccer, and you can see the average attendance in MLS compared to MLB, NBA, and NHL, and so it's starting to really eclipse some of the other leagues. Ticket pricing still remains relatively low, and that's good, and it's done by design to keep people that are younger participating, to be able to bring families, and it's looked at as a family-oriented sport where it's reachable by just about all socioeconomic There has been a significant infrastructure investment in soccer in the last 20 years in stadiums. This is a list of, again, this is a slide which I think you have seen here in front of this body a few times, but it's, the league has made no bones about saying, "We would like soccer-specific stadia for our expansion franchises." And other than Atlanta FC, which is coming in next year and playing in the new Mercedes-Benz Dome where the Falcons will be playing, most of the new teams coming in are playing in soccer-specific stadia. And the league has told us, in my office and as well as some of you directly have spoken with the league, they would like to see soccer played in stadiums, not in football, not in NFL stadiums. There is a long-term opportunity to grow the national media rights. The media package right now that goes through 2022 is roughly $90 million a year to the league, although it says 77 in my report. Part of that goes to USA Soccer, so it's actually peeled off from MLS. We're seeing a big jump up in interest in television rights, and as I mentioned, Univision is a large investor in televising both international and US soccer. Part of that has been establishing a regular TV schedule. So, like, you're used to seeing Monday Night Football, the Final Four, you know when all of these things happen. It's getting people used to a regular airing of soccer, so ESPN, Fox, and Univision have done just that, and it's really helped the viewer audience. There's been a significant investment in player talent all around the globe, but definitely in MLS, bringing key players here to the United States and developing key players. And so youth development is an enormous part of MLS, as you undoubtedly are aware, and that, I think, is critical to an investment here in the community, is getting the folks to homegrown talent, and that, I think, is one of the cornerstones and the pillars of the success of MLS. The fan base continues to grow. We're seeing, we're targeting, or as we see MLS targeting, a younger audience, probably much, much younger than what the NFL typically targets, but all of our sports leagues are looking at targeting a younger audience, because they look at that's where the expenditures come from, and where money flows into sports and where viewership growth happens, that's where you'll see target audience. Soccer United Marketing is the marketing partner or business of MLS, and so some of the things that you probably have seen and might not have known was part of MLS are some of these insignias here with the CONCACAF and Champions League and USA, and US Soccer. They have the property rights for MLS, and some of their partners listed below, as well as the 18% compounded annual growth rate in sponsorship dollars coming into soccer. The league, as you know, and I'll go quickly through this, is a single-entity league structure, whereas the league controls the teams, the player contracts, and all of the partnerships with the league. The team-owner-operator is a partner in Major League Soccer and also a partner in Soccer United Marketing, and national revenues flow through to the league and then owner-operator revenues to the, to the local team, but a significant amount of revenues flow through the league and then down to the teams, which creates the stability, the stability of MLS in every market, and that's what they're trying to do. They're replicating the NFL model here, which has been one of stability, and when you have stability, you have value, and when you have value, you have people that want to invest in soccer. I think that may be it. So, that's the discussion about MLS. Part of our, our business with you is to put the word out about the city of Las Vegas. So, and I mentioned stability, and I mentioned revenue, that having a city like Las Vegas, which is willing to partner with a developer, partner with a team owner, is something that adds legitimacy to any franchise, potential franchisee that would like to present to the league. And so our goal is to do something very different than what you've seen before you in the past, is we're not looking at an economic development study, we're not looking at whether soccer will work here in, in Las Vegas, we're putting together a commercial message that is designed to attract investors that are willing to partner with the city and build a, to seek an MLS franchise and build the infrastructure related to it, which means a stadium, practice facilities, hire the appropriate staff, and embrace the city of Las Vegas. And so it is a sell-side assignment for us. We are going to create the materials which the city will use and in conjunction with us to seek investors that will come forth and join the city in presenting a cohesive and a plan to market a franchise expansion program for MLS. And so if you read what MLS is looking for, they're looking for committed local ownership. And again, it doesn't have to be 100% local ownership, but they're looking for people in the community to embrace that. They're looking for a history of strong fan support, which I think the city of Las Vegas has demonstrated in the past, and a comprehensive stadium plan. Now, not all of those things are equally balanced, but those are three of the important parts that the city would need to embrace, and it doesn't mean financing that, it just means assisting and bringing what you do best, which is creating community, creating the platform around which a owner can build their franchise here in the community. And with that, I'll hand it back to you and Mayor and City Council, if you have any questions for me, I'm glad to answer.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, Councilman Barlow?
Yes. Good to see you.
Good to see you again. Happy New Year to you.
Thank you, Councilman. Happy New Year.
For both you and Mr. Arndt, and in no particular order, the questions that I have, number one, you mentioned, "Put the word out about Las Vegas." Can you expound on that a little bit more? What do you mean by "put the word out regarding Las Vegas"?
So if you've read the discussions or the blogs about expansion, it's a crowded field, there's no doubt about it, and you might say, "Well, we haven't seen Las Vegas mentioned in any of those," or "mentioned significantly in any of those blogs," and they have been mentioned, it has been mentioned. If you look at bluetestament.com, which is a blog about expansion in MLS, you see Las Vegas mentioned quite frequently, but not mentioned as a frontrunner. It's because the city of Las Vegas has been a passive participant in this recently, at least in the last year or so, since the last foray into this ended in not moving forward. So it's the goal of this marketing book is to create what would be the playbook, how's that, for bringing in a franchise. That means that these are the things that the city is interested in doing, the infrastructure that's in place here in the city, the community, the interest, the potential sites for having a stadium, which maybe involve Cashman, may be other places, your potential for youth soccer development, and how a potential franchise would interact with the other franchises in, say, the southwest or in the central part of the United States, and presenting that not only to MLS, but presenting it to potential investors, and elite investor clearly, but other investors. So that is a, it's a marketing piece, if you will. And it's, Councilman Barlow, you're a football player, a former football player, you've, I think most of you all pay attention to the NFL.
Former soccer player.
Former soccer player as well.
Yes.
Excellent, so am I.
Okay.
In our business, we're a mergers and advisory business. We look at buying and selling sports franchises. To do that, it's part understanding the business of the sport, part understanding the local community, and part understanding the profit potential or the business success potential that could be had from locating here in Las Vegas. And so that is the presentation that we would put together. It would not be a 10- or 15-page PowerPoint presentation that we would do here in front of City Council. We're looking at a book that's, you know, 200 or 300 pages, that has pro forma revenue and expenditure data, the demographics of the city of Las Vegas, how the city would fit into the mix compared to other cities, what the city of Las Vegas is willing to do or willing to participate in in terms of supporting that business. Now, it doesn't mean financial, it could be anything from youth soccer development, from the Mayor's Cup, from other events, from participating in land grants, in also furthering other economic development for soccer. So it is really creating a full package that would allow you to put your best foot forward to potential owners, and people that may not know the city of Las Vegas for anything other than what you expect they would, which is gambling capital, which is far from the, what the benefits are of the city of Las Vegas in terms of sports and in demographics.
My next question is, who are most likely the investors that we will be attracting or the investors that you've mentioned?
That's a great question.
Who are they most likely?
Well, I would tell you that I don't know the answer right off the top of my head. There are dozens of investors interested in Major League Soccer, but there's a much larger universe of investors that are interested in soccer just generally, internationally played soccer. And so we're seeing an influx of capital from Southeast Asia, from China, looking to invest in U.S.-based assets, and that may have nothing to do with the fact, other than they're looking at dollar-denominated assets in sports, and it's inexpensive to invest in Major League Soccer compared to, say, the NFL, the NBA, or NHL at this point. We're looking at European owners that are looking to share their soccer prowess with U.S.-based soccer teams. And so like Man City and Manchester United, where you already have assets in places where you have 100-year history of soccer, they want to bring that and partner with a local U.S. MLS team. And so there's a number of those franchises similar to that. This is a business that is growing, and when there's growth, there's a lot of change. We'll seek investors that are U.S.-based, we'll look at ones around the globe as well.
And one follow-up, Mayor. And then, has any other municipality taken the approach to actually seek out investors as well as MLS? And if so, please let us know who they are.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman, I would just point out, I mean, St. Louis is, their incoming governor has sort of, has said that they won't support a state public financing of soccer stadium. Now, it has anything to do with what you are talking about, because we're not talking about public financing of a soccer stadium today, or maybe at any time, but the Tennessee Legislature has passed a bill to promote MLS in Nashville. The state of North Carolina is also, or the city of Raleigh is also doing that, city of Cincinnati, Tampa, Detroit, San Diego, San Antonio. Have they gone out and hired individual consulting firms to help them do that? I can't say for sure. I know a number of my competitor firms are working on projects similar to this, but they may also be working for the private sector. It's a little bit unusual for us to work with local government to help promote something like this. It's an odd assignment, if you will, but it's one that needs to happen because sitting here and saying we're interested is not going to bring an investor, because you need to promote the great beneficial aspects of the city of Las Vegas, the employment, the economic development possibilities, the amount, the property, the ability to tap into a market that has not been tapped into. And so it takes a bit of care to do that, and our firm is uniquely situated to do that. We've been involved in soccer globally for a number of years, and I could list a number of places where we've represented both teams and communities in this, in that respect.
Mayor, I'm sorry, just, he just spawned one more thought when he mentioned the public-private relationship, which is not necessarily an anomaly, but it's something that's very unique in the sense of this joint partnership in order for us to move in this direction if, in fact, the council decides to do so. But having said that, how would you, from your firm's standpoint, help us market or market us in what spaces?
Right. Absolutely, yeah. Councilman, we are in the market of buying and selling soccer all the time globally, and it's, we have to be somewhat careful here that we're not conflicted, but we are representing the city of Las Vegas 100% in helping you sell the city to an investor to come here and invest in soccer in the city of Las Vegas. And so we'll use our experience and our relationships with investors in soccer globally to bring them here to meet with you, to discuss the benefits of having a soccer base here with MLS. Once we've actually shortlisted or come up with a handful of potential investors, we'll get down into further negotiations, but we would present them to the league themselves and ready them for approval by MLS. So our goal would be to help you prepare the marketing materials, source investors, prepare both the city and the investors for the barrage of questions that might come from the league, and then help you negotiate agreements between that investor or investors with the city of Las Vegas. So it'd be a soup to nuts in that standpoint. We would be helping you from every stage of the game. Now, you're approving us to prepare a marketing book for you. That marketing book would be a fairly thick book about what the city has to offer and using what we know about soccer in the United States, and with your approval after that, we would go out and seek investors.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. I can't help but think about the two-year battle that went on here about the previous proposal to create a stadium and attract or attempt to attract a team. I've been in public life a long time, and I can tell you that I only, and that's 35 years, I can only think of one other issue in my career which has torn apart the body which I served more than this. This was it. Very difficult for us. We lost our collegiality for quite a while, it grew nasty, and sometimes we were ill-tempered with each other. Now, it appears to me maybe the table is set a little differently. In those days, which I hope are gone forever, we had really radical opposition from folks who really didn't want the city to have the stadium. It had nothing to do with whether it was a good idea, but, well, where it was, and that became a turf battle. And then you had folks in other governmental bodies stepping out and opposing what we wanted to do, which for the life of me, I could never understand, since it would benefit them. So I will support this if I kind of get a feeling from the council that this is not the first shot in a battle, but rather a means of determining whether we should have a fight, because it's a low-cost way to get into, and we re-enter, but in a different way, re-enter the competition for a team. We, I just can't see us sacrificing our collegiality over this issue again unless we have some feel for acceptance on the council. That should it turn out to be a good study, that it is worth it for us to go on. The newspapers changed hands, I think that bodes well for this because the former ownership of the Review Journal, to be specific, was very, very violently opposed to what the city was doing. Now, they apparently have an open mind on public financing, and we don't even know if public financing would be required. So, you know, I'm hoping that they, rather than, that they give us a fair look and that hopefully put on a booster hat for the further expansion. I represent the side of town, which is 60% Latino, and I'm fully aware of the demographics and the appeal of soccer, football, south of the border, between football and baseball, football and baseball, those are the two sports that make Latin hearts jump. And, you know, I think it's time, and I think that it is good that we think about the perfect venue, which is Cashman Field. There could be others, we have other Ichridge, but, you know, Cashman was an, we auditioned to Cashman when there was the fight over the NFL. We really took advantage of that opportunity to show what really could be done with Cashman. So there's already a lot of work done. You did a lot of work two years ago on that, and then on the NFL thing, we showed that we could build a lower-cost stadium without all of the reallocation of highway funds to make people, to make it accessible. We already have that, and that battle is done, and I'm happy we're going to have an NFL stadium and team. But I want to make sure again that I say, we really have to make sure, watch ourselves here, and make sure we don't get too far out over our skis to where we can't reverse course or at least be flexible, and I'm speaking to myself as well as the rest of my colleagues. I will be supporting this if I can get that feel.
Thank you. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. So if I'm hearing this correctly, this is a, this is funding a marketing effort to let people know that we're interested in Major League Soccer. So I'm not really understanding that because it's no secret that we're interested in Major League Soccer under the right circumstances. So it's not like the world, it's not like Major League Soccer doesn't know that we're interested in a team here. I mean, the world knows that we're a major league sporting city. We have the NHL's here, the NFL may coming here, so if you don't understand that we're a Major League team location, I mean, you got your head in the sand, you're not even knowing what's going on. So to spend money to let folks know that we're interested in a Major League Soccer team here doesn't seem like it's an appropriate use of money. If somebody was interested in Major League Soccer, putting a team here, they could just call Bill Arndt up, and we got some great staff, and they could give them all the information, and if they want to put a team here, they'll put a team here, and under the right circumstances, under the right funding formula, everybody up here would probably approve it. So, but, I mean, the secondary issue is we don't have a stadium, we don't even have a location for a stadium, so why would somebody be interested in coming here if those things aren't even in place? So it seems like if somebody wants to bring Major League Soccer here, they could call us up and say, "Hey, we want to talk to you about A, B, C, and D, and we don't need a marketing plan for that, we don't need a consultant to do that, we got some great people here that can handle that." So I think this is way premature to do something like this. I think we, people already know that we're a Major League city, and we would welcome Major League Soccer under the right circumstances, so I'm not going to be supporting the contract.
Thank you, Your Honor. From Sports Illustrated on down to many other far lesser-known publications, for the last three weeks, we've been afire with rumor that David Beckham is moving his Miami franchise that never has quite happened here to Las Vegas in conjunction with the T-Mobile Arena. So this seems like too little an effort, far too late. I will be joining Councilman Anthony in opposition.
May I, Your Honor?
Please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me say this, and I think, Mr. Arndt, it has to do with the comment you made in briefing the other day regarding this agenda item, and I think, Mr. Abrams, you displayed a map of the United States. If you can get back to that map for me with the mayor's indulgence. These are potential expansion markets, and the comment Mr. Arndt made in my briefing the other day was that if we don't do something now, we may be too late. And I think right now, Southern Nevada's on the cusp, but Councilman Anthony was quite right in regards to an NHL franchise. I've seen all indications that the Raiders will be moving to Las Vegas, I've seen nothing against that. Mayor, I've sat through several of the meetings that you sat through on the stadium's authority, whatever that committee was put together by the governor. There's a lot of movement going, and I think we are on the cusp of making, you know, Las Vegas a Major League team again, or, well, for sure now, but I don't want to miss out on this opportunity. I think the right marketing, and I'm not going to disagree with Councilman Anthony's comments about, you know, the whole world knows we want to be a major franchise, but we need to do more. We've got assets and opportunities in the city of Las Vegas. Surely Clark County is going to, well, all of Southern Nevada is going to reap the benefits of the NHL and a football team, without a doubt. But I think we need something here at the city of Las Vegas as well, something that's significant and substantial. AAA baseball's great, and we certainly don't want that to ever go away, it's a great asset to the city of Las Vegas, but I think if we don't, if we don't try to advertise, promote, and you've got the connection, Mr. Abrams, you do this all the time and around the world with all this, with a lot of folks. I'd like to see something come back to the city council that's substantial. I certainly know my colleagues to the right and with their positions and the positions they had with the last go-around we had with Major League Soccer, and I respect them for that. But I also think we need to do everything we possibly can to push this train down the road and seize the moment and get a team for the city of Las Vegas, whatever that thing, whatever it looks like at the end of the day. I'm willing to spend this money to make this happen, and for you to come back to us and say, "Look who I've got with me, look who's sitting behind me who's willing to do X, Y, and Z." So I don't want to miss out on that opportunity, and this map is explanatory. It's the potential expansion markets. Did you say it was Tennessee that created legislation?
Yes. Yes, they proposed the bill, and I don't think the governor has signed it and the legislature has passed it on for signature, but they are actively pursuing for Nashville an MLS franchise.
And Mayor, if I can, I think it's important to recognize that if other communities are doing this and we are not, and we lose that opportunity because the MLS is only going to expand their franchise by so much every year, right? I mean, I don't know how that works, but my understanding is they're only expanding, doing expansion teams so many times per year annually, I don't know how that works, but I don't want to miss out on the opportunity for our residents. Councilman Coffin's talked about the large Latino population in his ward. It's very, very popular. I've been down there, I've seen our fields filled. We host the Mayor's Cup twice a year in the city of Las Vegas, which has such an economic impact. impact. And I got firsthand, Mayor, this last year, I got to go out there and give out awards at Centennial Hills Park, and it was great to see the enthusiasm for these kids and these families who come from around the world to Las Vegas. I think we'd have that same kind of energy and that same kind of vibe if we had our own Major League Soccer team here, so I'm going to be fully supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Abrams.
Thank you. I'd like to add too, I think, you know, I hear from everybody here, and I tend to like to come in front of the open meeting law and don't go proselytizing quietly behind the scenes, although I was instructed by my husband of mayor of 12 years, you need to count to four, get your count to four. And I did it one time, and the very last group of two that I spoke to changed everything I'd done all day long. So it's open meeting time, and I do hear our council, I absolutely agree with Councilman Coffin. I don't recall before becoming mayor in 2011, ever for that prior 12 years, ever seeing a council so split as ours became. I think we missed a huge opportunity, I think there were some flaws, we learned a lot from it. We have seen ideas come through city council that have been taken on by other parts in the county to become the successful go-to place. We have redevelopment funding and potential down here. We certainly had a feeling initially with the Soccers, we explored that, the potential and positiveness of locating at Cashman, although the developers were not in favor of that at the time. But since that, and I'm not sure who had mentioned this, but we've been through a huge exercise with NFL. And we know that while Mr. Adelson and his group or his family are intent on having the NFL stadium close to the resort corridor, fine, we know that downtown on Cashman, by having a stadium or stadia, if there's more than one, we are in a position, we have the infrastructure already there, we have access already from four sites. By the time Project Neon's finished, we will have access from seven sites to that same campus. It has huge potential in the medical realm for sports medicine. It has so much potential in redevelopment and in a very challenged neighborhood to bring almost a forgotten area back in strength with redevelopment. We have over 25,000 current parking spaces available, and in a year and a half, we'll have 40,000, correct me if I'm wrong. It's where the 95 and the 15 come together, there is no better place to have something major happening. And of course, knowing and listening to Councilwoman this morning, who talked about the intake at Lake Mead, the third one, which was a very unpopular vote for her when she sat on the Water Authority or Water District Board. I do recall listening to city council dialogue about having the Performing Arts Center with a huge pushback and creating the Mob Museum, huge pushback. And yet they've both become, well, everything has become absolutely stellar. And Las Vegas is built, has been growing exponentially out of the heartbeat of the people that are here, that are willing to really be part of Las Vegas, be on the cutting edge, do something different, and always look for ways to revitalize or vitalize a community. I think we learned a lot, one of the things that I learned was from the private sector, most specifically in watching Bill Foley go forward with the NHL, the first thing Bill Foley did was put money into marketing, the concept, big time. We never did that, there was never dime marketing the positives. And so a groundswell began very small and got its own heartbeat, which was not the message that was the right message, but we didn't get the support from the private partnership, as you know, because you went around the block with us 50 times and more so. So, you know, I look at all this, I know we're ready downtown, I know we need this, I know so many things have been improved upon downtown, and this would just kick it in the pants. I mean, we are so ready for it for so many reasons. It's already funded, totally funded, Project Neon, yeah, Project Neon, the interchange, and the downtown owners, I understand multi-millions have gone into the renovation at the Boyd California Club, Derek Stevens having purchased the Las Vegas Club, plans are there, a lot of wonderful plans are ready at Symphony Park with the wonderful Las Vegas Medical School, UNLV Medical School coming in, timing is right. And I, knowing you and having learned to appreciate and met with you not only here many times, but watching you in New York and meeting with groups of very, very lofty, hard, smart business people, knowing what your reputation is, today is now. And what is is, we're going into a very different administration, very different outlook. I am confident that a lot of what the federal government's been doing over these past eight years is going to be kicked to the states for funding, and our state doesn't have funding available, we're already in a hole looking at a big one. So I think it's time for us to really push forward on this, put a lot of money into the marketing, for all of us that are permitted by our legal staff to get out there and find those private partners that are going to make it work. If in fact the commission is amenable, and I think we have a very good relationship with Commissioner Barber and the ownership that we've been privileged to meet with, I think it is time for us really to be right out there, as we did with the Smith Center for the Performing Arts and the Mob Museum and the third, whatever you call it, pumping station, and time to move to the next level. If not, everything's going to go to the other end of the strip, and we're just going to watch ourselves die. And I know for those county commissioners who had been opposed to it, very much in favor of how something like this or the NFL would do so much for redevelopment downtown and for the middle class and the people that make this entire community work, they're the people that work the hotels, that work the jobs, that drive the buses. And so this will do nothing but spin off to them to give them a better quality of life. So I am 100% behind, however this is going to work forward, you have 1,000% of my effort again. And I, but I do echo and I will always hear Councilman Coffin's sadness because I felt the same way. I've never seen that before in 18 years, a divided council, and I hope that's not the case. So that's my comment, and I see Council, and is ready, your little lights on. Did you want to say something?
Yes, no, I have read to say something, I thought you were turning to me to make a motion. I think this, Councilman Anthony is saying that we're using this perhaps to just find out if people want to have it or if it's amenable to the group. Councilman Coffin is saying that he thinks what we're trying to do is collect more information to see if it's feasible. I think this is different than the other soccer situation we were in. That was one of my tough votes, and I voted against it, and I will tell you today, I felt I made the right vote in that situation. However, this is different, that took a lot of public monies, which I felt should not go in that direction. This seems to me different. We have a dormant, how many acres is it, Mr. Coffin? 50? 50 acres we have there, I'm not as familiar across town for me, but 50 acres that are dormant, we know the 50 ones are going to leave, no matter if we help them leave or we don't. I mean, it seems almost inevitable, they're going to leave. We're going to have 50 acres there that could be utilized to bring in additional monies of great value. But it depends on, again, who's going to be involved. I was concerned about 50% of the other partnership, and how much public monies are needed. Some places we have public monies, some places we don't. There is a very strong feeling against using public monies, that's what's got the Oakland Raiders in trouble right now. San Diego's losing their team, I have somebody who's close to me working there, and they're gone. Their headquarters will be in Costa Mesa probably, to hit the LA area. But what I'm just trying to say is this is a different situation, you're asking for $80,000 to collect more information, I mean, that's my understanding, and correct me, please, if I'm wrong, to collect more information on how we would organize this and how we would be able to finance it, what would the private group give as far as it's all concerned, and would public monies be expected or not expected? We don't know that yet in this type of situation. And as the mayor said, we already, and the others have said, the place is there, this is 50 acres there, it's not starting from scratch. And I think with a soccer stadium, to me, it seems it's not quite as complicated as a football stadium or something else along that line. So for using the money to collect additional information, which I feel is critical, whether you're pro or you're con, you need to have the full amount of information, when you're talking about necessary money that could come to the city through development of what will eventually become a dormant 50 acres, I myself would back this. So I just wanted to say that, and those are my reasons. But I have to tell the mayor, I'm not sorry I voted against the other because I did not think the other was going to work.
Your Honor, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 36. That's my motion.
Okay. There's a motion, please, on Agenda Item 36 to approve.
This is $80,000.
$80,000.
Yeah, not any more than that.
For Phase 1.
To get additional information, right.
Correct, not exceed $80,000.
Not exceeding.
And then we come again, and if it should, we then take that information to determine if we feel it's worthwhile or if it's valuable. We're taking a little bit of a risk there, but that's what we've taken in the past, just have to weigh it all.
Somehow it didn't go through, there we go. Please post. Motion carries, thank you very much, we look forward to doing what we can to help.
Mayor, can I make one more comment before Mr. Abrams leaves? As you were making your comments, it made me think of the over 300,000 employees that are employed in the gaming and tourism industry in Southern Nevada. The Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority spends millions of dollars annually to promote Las Vegas and to bring people here, even though people want to come here anyway, but they still have to invest that money in promoting the destination, and I think that's significant to recognize because of the mayor's comments as well, so thank you, Mayor.
And of course, thank you, Councilman. And the other thing is, of course, you know, the U.S. Conference of Mayors is the 16th to the 20th or something. And so I don't know who from staff is going to be back there, but since DC is pretty close to New York, if there's anything we can help with in the exploration, and I do have people that are interested, which I'm sure has been passed on to you, as the private, as an interest in private partnership, but they don't know the whole ball of wax there either.
And I'm, Mayor, I'm active in the Mayor's Professional Sports Council with the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and so we reach out to mayors all over the United States about their involvement and investment in sports, so we have a fairly good pulse as to what's going on around the country and what people are doing to invest in that, in that business.
Well, I'm back there, so just know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Happy New Year to you and your family and your team.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We will now go on to Agenda Item 37, and this is discussion for possible action regarding the award of contract number 170035-PH Insurance Broker Services, Department of Human Resources' award recommended to Willis of Arizona Inc., $67,500 liability insurance property damage internal service awards. This is service fund, all awards. So Mr., no, you don't look like Mr. Tarwater either of you. Let's go, Ms. Appleyard, please, again, reintroduce yourself, please.
Vanetta Alpeir, Director of Finance. The item before you is a contract award for insurance broker and consulting services for the city's various insurance requirements, and it's being awarded to Willis of Arizona. Award of this contract was done on a competitive basis, and I have joining me Ed O'Neil, who's the acting purchasing and contracts manager, who will re-provide you an overview of that bidding process.
Okay, thank you. What I'm going to do is hear from everybody from the city, and then, Mr. Karcher, absolutely, I'm going to hear from you, so you can sit and relax.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Edward O'Neil and the acting purchasing and contracts manager for the city of Las Vegas. A year ago, we had a failed RFP for the same services for insurance broker services. The council had extended the contract with our existing provider at that time, which was Aon Corporation, and council directed staff with instructions to reach out to the local insurance brokers and try to get a feel on what does local, a local broker, what is that and what does it mean, and try to get a better definition. Staff issued in request for information in April 2015, and the results of that RFI, there was no consensus on what a local broker is and what determines a local broker. So with the results of that RFI, the council was briefed on the, on the results of that and the RFI findings. We issued another RFP for the brokers, insurance broker services in October 2016, and we received seven proposals. Those proposals were submitted and reviewed with a predetermined evaluation team. This evaluation team consisted of members from the city staff as well as from another risk manager from a local agency. They did a great job of evaluating, and part of their evaluation process was to look at the best value for the city of Las Vegas and looking at the factors, including experience, resources, and qualifications of key personnel as well as price, and also if they had any local presence in the area. The evaluation team created a finalist list of four firms. Those firms were brought in to do a interview, to go through an interview process with the evaluation team so that the evaluation team can get a better feel for exactly what it is that the firm was willing to do for us. After the interviewing process, there were two other firms that were then selected, we had more conversations with them, and at the end of that, that process, we, the evaluation team is recommending the selection of Willis of Arizona as the company offering the best value to the city of Las Vegas. So staff is recommending the council to award a firm fixed-price contract to Willis of Arizona for one year with three one-year options to renew. At this time, I'll take any questions that you may have for this.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil, thank you. Happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year.
Comments, questions at this stage? I think we're okay. I see Mr. Vincent there, were you adding to this? No. Okay. I'm going to ask, since there are no questions at this point, I'm going to invite Mr. Karcher. Excuse me, oh, I do see two lights on. Wait, not yet, Mr. Karcher. Start with, who was first, Mr. Coffin?
Thank you. I think these questions would just be for the entire team too, so it's not necessary for you to feel obligated to answer everything yourself, because I think we've been hearing, we heard in the general comments before the meeting, and we will hear from members of the business community here in Las Vegas about their thoughts on this award. So it doesn't seem like a lot of money, it's a, it's a small amount of money, and I guess one has to say, well, is that in lieu of commission, or is that on top of commission? Are we talking about cost plus? You know, I spent 40 years in that business, so I have a feel for what we, what we do to earn the money. So there's something about that number that's very low. So explain what they would do for that money.
Well, there was, that is the fixed firm price for the basic services that was provided, so everyone that submitted a bid had that, had a basic price. They were not the lowest offer of that, of those services, but there were definitely higher prices that were done. But this, in the contract, this particular contract offers a couple of things. One, if there's our additional services that need to be rendered, then the city would go into negotiations with them if there's more complex situations, the city can go into, for CIP projects, for example, that they would go into. that they would go into a more detailed and negotiated pricing with that. We also have Vince of the HR Department, he's going to talk a little bit more about the insurance portion of it. Also to mention, we do have the Executive Vice President of the company of Willis of Arizona here, and he can speak more on, his name is Chuck Halsey, he can speak more to the services as well.
Willis of Arizona is part of a much larger aggregate, a combine, one of the largest, maybe the largest agency in the country, I think. So it's hard to tell. But I do know that they're not here, so the question becomes is, what, who was the low bid? And are they also responsible but just did not seem to conform to?
Just by clarification.
I'd like to know. They're not the lowest bidder, so if who?
This was not a low bid.
Can you say who you are? I'm sorry for the record.
For the record, Mark Vincent, Chief Financial Officer. This was a request for proposal process. We were looking at best value. Price was a consideration, but wasn't the consideration, so low price doesn't win in an RFP process. That's why we have an evaluation team. Because if it was low bid, then we would need an evaluation team to look at other factors. Willis is present here and can answer any questions you might have about them. Chuck Halsey, I think, is in the audience, so if you have questions about that firm, he is prepared to answer those. And the other question you had, I think Vince can answer it, but you, I don't think Edward unfortunately didn't answer it completely, and that was that the contract, while it was fixed price, it does require the broker to identify any allowances, commissions, any other revenues that they would receive to disclose them to us, and they be netted against the fixed fee. So that fee is intended to include all the costs for their broker services. If we need additional services for unanticipated insurance needs, then there's a provision in the agreement in the RFP to pay for that on an hourly basis. So the $65,000 should include.
So it could be, most likely would be a lot larger than this. It's just that this is the beginning. This is one bid of a small portion. Still having a little hard time grasping this. I had a brief explanation at briefings, but it still seems to me to believe some unanswered questions.
Maybe I could let Vince explain some of the services that we were getting from Aon that were inclusive in the fee that they were charging, and Aon's fee, and I'm just using them as the incumbent example. Their fee was considerably higher, and so it was difficult for us to make sure that everybody who proposed understood some of the other services that we were getting from Aon that we weren't necessarily paying for directly, which is part of the overall fee. And so we needed to make sure that there was a mechanism that they understood how many insurance certificates, for example, would we need assistance in verifying, things of that nature, so that they knew generally what the scope of work was. But if we have a new project come about that has some very unusual insurance requirements, like what we went through with the Smith Center, for example, like what we went through with even the City Hall project because it was a sort of a lease arrangement, we need those insurance broker services to help us work through those insurance solutions when we've got multiple parties involved in this project. But I'll let Vince kind of answer the other question.
Okay, now Vince is an HR guy, so he's health insurance and stuff. PNC also on your portfolio?
And if you'll announce yourself for our record, please.
Mayor Council, Vince Somore, Human Resources Manager. Answer to your question, Councilman Coffin. I also handled the risk benefits, the risk side of the human resources piece. So to answer your question, the services that Willis of Arizona will be providing will be to secure excess workers' compensation bids for our coverage, property, fire and boiler, employee dishonesty, marine liability for some of the elements we have up at the lake, and any other additional lines of coverage that we have. Also, one of the big components of the services that the previous broker was providing was the review of certificates of coverage that we have for our special events in the Parks and Rec Department and our Cultural Affairs Department, and those particular items which come in quite frequently and require a special look at rather than staff just looking at them. We pass those along to the broker to review from a risk perspective. So they analyze our risks, they look at the liability that we'd be facing and making sure that we have the appropriate amounts of coverage. We just went through a similar type of evaluation with the petty cab and the pedal buses, you may recall, to take a look at that. We're also looking at the autonomous bus that's going to be going on now during CES. So we have a lot of interaction with our current broker, and we anticipate the same level of interaction with our future brokers to make sure that we have appropriate level of coverage and assessment of risk.
Anything further, Councilman Coffin?
I'll just go with some questions.
Okay. Okay, so with no comments, our questions here, Mr. Carter, please. And re-announce yourself, so for the record, please.
Happy New Year, Your Honor.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Fellow City Council staff, I'm Alan Carter, President of Carter Insurance, 955 Hillwood Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. I am a native born. Bob, you knew my father. My mother delivered many babies in this city. Councilman Barlow knows that. Councilman, my Tarkanian, my gatekeeper is Lisa Barnett. My kids went to your school. Steve, I'm sorry I didn't do very much with you. My godmother, Mr. Stavos Anthony, probably worked with my godmother. And Bob Beers knows exactly what I do for the Chamber of Commerce, walking hundreds of businesses into the city on a daily and maybe an annual basis. So I want to go on a couple of those things because I was not invited in to come in and do a presentation. I did a written one, but I did not get an opportunity to come in here and do a verbal one. So I want to show you the knowledge, because one thing about Las Vegas, in Nevada, we have great statutes to protect this city and state. I'm not in Arizona, we are local. So the consensus of local, I was at that REI, I never saw Willis there. And you might want to ask him how many employees. We have over 50 in our office. And so I want to go on, and since I got an interview opportunity here, which I think I was hoping to see a local broker win this account, but I want to let you know, I read 10 years of your claims. I know your loss history by heart. Brad, you have done a great job. Your current broker has a $750,000 retention on your GL. It should probably be half of that, knowing the statutes of the state of Nevada with the $100,000 liability first duty of inspection. I learned that. I could quote, and I will debate anybody, on presumption benefits. So when it comes to excess workers' comp, the presumption benefits is a great benefit for the men and women in uniform, and I think that could be something that could be a very good bargaining tool when you look at some of that. Also, I want to go into this. I looked at your last year's insurance. I think there's 20% in savings on that. That's why I was kind of like a little upset with the last one, what was in last year. And let me tell you something. You're with affiliated FM, that's a company I put on this risk many years ago. You should be with like an FM Global. So we have the talents, we have the response, and we can respond to this city in a heartbeat. We're here. We are your neighbors, we are your brothers, your sisters, we are here. So this consensus on local just astounds me of what this is. I want to give you a statistic. If you take Carter Insurance, Craigan and Pike and Levitt, we have over 250 years of community service to this valley. 250 years. You know what that is? That's payroll. That's taxes. That is service to the community. That is charities to the community. And we all go to your schools. We're here. We are your citizens. So I'd like to know if you want to debate, I'll debate anybody on this. When it comes to the government laws and to deal with insurance, and I'm sorry, but I do have Luke here, when I've taken over some of these accounts, I've cut the cost of insurance and risk management in half. And I was never invited to for an interview? That shocks me, especially because I am local. So I don't understand why we can't have a debate or do something like that, but just do, this is your RFP. This is how we respond. That's the work that my office did. We didn't take it out of state. We bought it here local and did it local. My son's here, third generation Vegas, and Joel's the one who helped put together the RFP. We're endorsed by the Clark County Bar Association. You name it. And I was pointing on each one of you, you all know us. So this thing on local consensus, you gotta be kidding me. My best man, my wedding, it works with Vincent, Mike Fredericks. What is this thing about a consensus on local? So here we go again. You take your professional services, you want us to buy your tickets to the stadiums or the shows and all that stuff, but you take your insurance and your professional, one year, Chicago. Next year, Los Angeles. Now we're going to go down to Phoenix. Wow. And here we are, this city was built on the back of entrepreneurs, not Wall Street. And please, don't forget that. And that is the difference when you look at local consensus. And you know, I'm looking at every one of you. So what is this, local consensus? My mother delivered babies for over 30 years in the city. You know how my godmother was. So please, I mean, this thing, we could do as good or better, because we are transparent. We're doing it for a fee, it would be even negotiable fee. I mean, some people in this audience knows what kind of negotiations I do. That's what we do. We are local, we're your brothers, we're your sisters, and come into our office, because the question I was going to ask, do you or should you come and visit the offices that provide these professionalized services to the city and see the people behind our address? I've told you forever. You've done great. So this whole thing comes down, well, if somebody wants to debate me on the laws of the state of Nevada, how you could do a better job for the city, I'm here right now. Who wants to talk about presumption benefits? How about the Nevada statutes in the state of Nevada to protect the city? Come on, who wants to debate me? And you don't even give me an interview process? Your husband pointed me on a lot of boards, and he knew the work I did. So I am shocked that I could come in here because I didn't see anybody like this that was at the RFI. Chuck, did you show up at the RFI?
Yes, I did.
Well, I didn't see anybody there. But anyway, I just want to go on this, which is really impressive that this is, and then I want to show you something. This blows me away. This is what your staff does. In order for us to protest, do you know what the dates were? I got them right here. The dates here, I have five business days from this, from December 21, Merry Christmas. Is that how we spell Christmas? Now how do you respond in five days or a Christmas vacation? I mean, what is this? And I deal with a lot of local businesses, and you know what I do at the chamber, I welcome new businesses into the city all the time. And they come up to me, and I hear it all the time because they see me on camera. That's how I found out about last year. They see me on camera and they go, how do we work with the city? And I start laughing. I've been born and raised here, and I can't even work with the city. So this whole thing just blows me away, and I don't even get an interview. Not even an interview. And I'll debate anybody. I've handled SUMA Corporation, MGM, I handled all the big clients. I ran Marsh McLennan here. I ran Beatty Martin &amp; Fay here. So I am shocked that we will take professional services when you want us to support everybody and take it out of the state of Nevada again. I was just going to say one other word, and that was shame. That, you think about it, I was going to have Craigan and Pike here and everybody, and they just give up because they think it's a losing cause to even work with y'all. That's a shame. 250 years plus of service to this community. Thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Would you like Mr. Halsey to come up to address you? Any questions you might have for that firm?
Well, do we have any comments, questions here? Ask Councilman Barlow.
Yes. When this item came before us, I guess mid-last year, first or second quarter, I can't recall, but I know it was last year when this item came before us in regards to the discussion of local participation. Was this surrounding this particular item, or was that another insurance, RFP, RFQ item we were addressing?
The R, for the record again, Mark Vincent, Chief Financial Officer. The RFP that we issued, this last RFP, had a provision in it that would have allowed for some local broker, for lack of a better word, participation. I remember how it was exactly worded. Edward might be able to reply to that. But the difficulty we still have is, we've never been able to define what a local broker is. And so that's where we're at. And I'm sure Mr. Halsey here will like to say that he's a local broker. I'm sure he's going to say that to you, because I've heard it already from just about everybody that we, that we, every proposal we had said exactly the same thing. The interviews that we had had exactly the same comments, we wanted a possible exception, and that was Aon, because they have absolutely no office here in Nevada at all. So that was the dilemma we had.
Adam here.
We didn't have any, the only firm that offered any potential program was Aon, as a matter of fact, and that was more of a minority business, woman-owned type of a program. It wasn't a local broker-type program, so.
And so as far as the criteria, can you just give me a backdrop in relation to going back to what was mentioned?
I'll let Ed read to you with the criteria of the RFP.
Ed mentioned earlier as far as the criteria, because I'm just trying to understand what the issues are.
And again, you know, just so, I appreciate, but you know, we don't do these by debates.
No, no, I get that. That's why I'm asking the question, right.
We send out an RFP, people respond, the team reviews those. We do this all the time.
Yeah, I'm asking more of the structural process.
We review them, we decide who rises to the top, we interview those, make sure we're asking questions to get more detail about, did we miss something? And the evaluation team makes a recommendation of what they think the best value is, and that's the process.
Now, let me be clear, I'm not asking.
But Ed has a specific criteria, because it was listed in the RFP, and what we would be evaluating.
But let me be specific, I'm not asking for any names. I'm not asking for names. I'm asking for the structural process of how structurally we set up in order for applicants to respond to our RFP, RFQ. So if you can just explain that template to me, that would be helpful.
And again, each time you take the mic, I hate to ask you, but for the record, say your name, please.
For the record, Edward O'Neill, Acting Manager, Purchasing and Contracts. Mayor, through you. Councilman Barlow, we established local, put in a local participation, we put it as goals, but it's consideration. We ask for them to enter into their proposal, to explain their, how they would consider themselves to be local, if any. So we vet that out. The, again, back to, your question is how we're putting it, how their process is that they put it in, is that we just asked the question in the SOW-4 Local Participation Goals. The city has established a goal to foster participation by local firms in the city's insurance requirements. Non-local firms should commit to involving local firms through internal programs designed to utilize the services of local firms in areas where they can generate value for the city and the successful offer. By NRS, we cannot offer a preference, we cannot award directly to that, to a local firm, but we can have a stated goal in our RFP process to allow for them to submit that and take that into consideration.
And so, and so going back to that process, I know you mentioned earlier that there was a committee established. What is, what was the rationale for the committee being established? Because Mark mentioned that due to, we weren't looking necessarily for the lowest bidder, because if in fact we were looking for the lowest bidder, we wouldn't need a committee to oversee lowest bidder, we would just be looking specifically for price. So the overarching approach of the structure, help me understand that component. I know that I know that lowest bid is one of the criterias of many more, in order, in order for that committee to check the box of what those criteria points are. So it'd help me understand what those points, what, what were those benchmarks that the committee was looking for in order to select ultimately their final choice?
Mayor, through you. Councilman Barlow, when we issue an RFP, it's a proposal, so there is no component that says low bid. So price is just one of the considerations. And to get a consensus that is not just subjective to only one person's expertise, when we establish a evaluation committee, we generally will have three to five members. And those members came from HR, the city manager's office, finance department, and again, we selected a risk manager from another local entity, someone that was familiar with, with risk management.
Right.
So therefore, we have their expertise and not the expertise of just a purchasing agent.
I'm with you.
So they're the ones that will look at these proposals and take the parts out of the proposals and say, this is what's best for the city of Las Vegas. So we do RFPs to get best values, not just low bid. When we have a good, such as if we're buying a truck and we have all of the details, we'll do a low bid, because there's not gonna be any difference. When we have professional services, it is common practice that the staff will do a request for proposals, especially in complex solicitations such as these.
Okay. And see, in one, there's a perception in the public that council members know a lot about a lot, but in essence, we know a lot about a little. And insurance, specifically, what we're talking about here today, is not necessary something that we're, we know a lot about. And so, we have to rely on staff, such as those in HR, those in the manager's office, and the other departments that you mentioned, to, to help us, as a legislative body, choose appropriately the appro, the, the right approach and the right modeling in order to receive the best value, as you mentioned, for the city, right? And so, through that process, the question that hasn't been answered yet is, if you could just share, what were some of the benchmarks that each applicant had to check off in order for them to race to the top? Do you, you understand my question?
I do understand. You're, so the actual items that they are actually going to evaluate on?
Correct.
Okay. So one of the things that's going to be experienced in the city, or with this particular type of services that we're selecting?
Yes.
We are looking for the resources that they have to, to do. So when we write up our RFP, we will outline what it is that we have done in the past and what our expectations are.
Okay.
So how, what, what resources do they have to accomplish what we want them to do? We will ask them for the qualifications of the key personnel of the offers, not just the qualifications of, of someone in their organization, but of the key personnel that will be performing the task and duties of the project. Their work plan, how do they plan? How do they plan to deliver these things? The timing, if we have a request, how quickly will they be able to respond? And is it reasonable as far as their price is concerned?
Okay.
So that's one of the reasons, those are some of the factors that we use, to have those all written out. I can get you a copy of the RFP, if you liked, so that you can see those for reference, but there, it's spelled out in a, in a large document for the exact details of each one of those types of classifications or categories.
I understand, I appreciate it. Mr. Vincent, did you want to share some additional information in regards to my question?
No, other than to say, there, there are eighteen sections to the proposals that were submitted, so the human resources, risk management group works with purchasing contracts to develop the whole scope of work and the things that we wanted to see in the proposal. And those, so it's a rather large document, large proposals are being submitted, just as Mr. Carter demonstrated you, and then Edward has just described to you what the evaluation process is and what the team's looking for. But there's eighteen sections that were required to be submitted, covering various things with respect to the insurance contract. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me, let me just say this first, I mean, after having the opportunity to serve on this council for as many years as I have, the LVCBA, the RTC, the Water District, not the Water District, but the Regional Flood Control, I understand the RFP process clearly. And Betsy, as I told your new cultural affairs director this morning, when I met her, you have assembled an, an A-team of professionals and individuals that make this city shine. The rest of the governments know that, they've seen what you've done and what your executive team does. I have full faith in these people who know this business better than we certainly do. And I, and I appreciate Mr. O'Neill, the explanation you gave to Councilman Barlow, but it just sounds to me like these other firms just did not qualify. Am I correct?
Well, obviously, we go through an evaluation process so that we can bring a recommendation to you, and there's a winnowing that happens in that process, where you take the best qualified proposals, and they move on to the next level.
Right.
I know that it is very difficult to listen to the passion and emotion in Mr. Carter's voice today, and this has been a difficult road for this organization and for the people who've been actively seeking this work. We, as a staff, have a fiduciary responsibility to you and to the citizens to make the best recommendation to you. That's why we're recommending Willis today. We had a very well-thought-out, balanced approach in this evaluation, and not everyone gets picked. One gets picked, and we're in that situation again, and I know that it is very uncomfortable and very disappointing for those who are not the selected vendor. Even our former vendor was very disappointed that they were not selected, because they've been with us for a very long time. But given the overall construct of the responses throughout this process, we are recommending Willis today. And that's where we are, and we're hopeful that council will support that recommendation.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, if I can make a motion.
Your Honor.
I, let me ask a question, let me ask a question of the Mayor Protem. Is this a motion to, to adopt or approve or reject? I'm not sure what your motion is. Is it, is it a final motion in mind? Because I did have some thoughts, and I wanted to see if we could throw them up here before we have a final motion.
Before you do that, Councilman, if the Mayor will indulge me, also, through you, Mayor, Ms. Redwell, are there any specifics you can give us on any of these firms that did not qualify?
For an interview?
From, I mean, to, to get an interview, as Mr. Carter has alluded to, what, what does it take to get that far? I mean, do you guys know the specifics, or maybe Mr. O'Neill should answer that question, and entirely through the Mayor, of course? And I'm not questioning our process or procedure.
No, I understand it. I, I think it's kinda difficult, I, I'm happy to have our staff respond, but when you're evaluating firms on A-team criteria, and Mr. Carter showed you how thick the responses are, and I'm sure that's representative, and there may be some that are thicker and some that aren't quite that comprehensive. I'm happy to have staff talk to you about some of the considerations for moving from step one to step two, absolutely, that's fine. And I'll just leave it at that. I, I, I feel like we're, this is a very challenging item, and it's been a very, very challenging item for over two years now. We've spent maybe as much time on broker contracts as stadiums. And, and I don't mean to, to diminish the criticality of this decision at all, because I think it's significant, because having a solid risk management plan for the city is critically important. But it is very rare that we would let an applicant, without filing an appeal, to come forward the way that we have allowed this to happen on every one of these broker items in the last few years. It is odd, people aren't having to prove up why they're making a complaint, why they have not been selected in a formal way. That is normally what we do. That is the normal process, that's what we expect of every other qualified applicant who goes through a selection process like this. And we are kind of going down that path here today, as a part of this selection process, without requiring that. All the other bidders are not here. We didn't say, come one, come all, all seven of you have a fair shot at it today. And I'm a little bit worried about getting into that level of detail. I'll be happy to ask staff to respond, but I wanted you to understand my trepidation going forward, because it's a slippery slope. I believe as we deal with these contract disputes going forward.
If I might add, the only question that comes to me at this point, considering everything you've said, everything they've brought to us, and everything that Mr. Carter's brought to us over a period of time, in the process, in the process with the team of examiners, to make the line that gets an interview versus those that don't get an interview, that's my issue, because I did hear that here they are with the long-time history here, very involved, et cetera, et cetera, but no opportunity to make a presentation or get an interview. So at the point, whether you have five or twenty-five applicants, that line that says, this line below, five, ten, twenty, are not invited to make an applicant, make an appearance and make a presentation, that's all I really, we just wanted, that's unclear to me.
If I, if I may, again, Mark Vincent, CFO, maybe the best analogy I can come up with is the search for a new CFO. We've got eighty-three applicants for a new CFO. We had an outside consultant sort through those and help us, gave us the top twenty, twenty-five applicants. We go through and review their resumes, proposals, if you will, their resumes. We, from their call, seven that we decide we want to interview. We have our interview questions, we have our criteria we're looking for, but you're gonna go through this interview process, and ultimately, we pick four to carry over. This, this sort of process, even, even with a contract, works very much the same way. And so, you know, we, we can't have all eighty-three, as Betsy said, everybody got a shot, there has to be a way, a process, a criteria. I will tell you that I, I wouldn't say that, that any of the seven applicants were qualified. I wouldn't even, you, I've heard that said, why weren't they qualified to come to a presentation? A line has to be drawn someplace, and we, we, the evaluation committee went through a process, went through a rating process, looked at those aggregate scores, made a decision that here's where we draw the line, these we will bring back, these we won't, just like you would do in a normal interview process.
Thank you, and there were others, there were others.
There were others, there were seven applicants, right?
That did not get the opportunity to interview or present.
That's correct.
There were three.
Three, three of the seven did not.
And that answers my question.
Okay, that answers my question, and I think Councilman Coffin has come to it.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. I know there's a, a need to move on, but I, I thought maybe it's a good idea for us to remember that it is our fault, Betsy, don't take this personally, because I sense the staff is starting to worry that we are not paying attention to them, we give them a job, and then we take it out of their hands as soon as we, we do. And so, this is our fault here at the council, because we didn't give you clear direction as to, first of all, what is a local broker. So forgetting for just a minute who is a local broker, I do, I have some thoughts, but first I want to hear from the person who would represent, if selected, the, you know, the insurance angle here, like, so Mr. Halsey, from, if I can ask you to step forward and introduce yourself to the group, and tell us a little bit about yourself and also about Willis, and how long you've been here?
I, I have been a resident of Las Vegas for twenty-five years. I moved here in early nineteen ninety-two, and I raised two, two children as a single parent. My daughter graduated from Faith Lutheran, UNLV, my son from Pallaverty and UNLV. I have seen many of you around the community, and you probably have seen me also. A little background, I began working with business in Southern Nevada with the Howard Hughes Corporation in nineteen eighty-nine, and also Marnell Correio. And I came here in February nineteen ninety-two to open up an office for a company called Johnson and Higgins. Through the years, my business has grown and changed, so I am a local in many ways, twenty-five years, the same house in Summerlin for twenty-two years. And I, I support what everybody does here, and thank you for giving me time to speak and introduce myself. A little background on our staff, we have a, a group of staff here, we have roughly five people, Southern Nevada, we have a backroom of a couple hundred in Phoenix that we work with. Locally, I made some notes here on what we do in the area of public entity business, we are the insurance broker for Clark County, we do Clark County Metro Police, we do UMC Hospital, we do Southern Nevada Health District, we do the insurance programs for Clark County Department of Aviation, including McCarran Airport. In addition to that, we are the, we, we broker many of the programs for the state of Nevada. Willis runs the Pool Pack Organization, I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, out of Reno, which is all the counties other than Washeau and Clark County, which is for all the property liability, workers' compensation, and that is a Willis program, and that's for Nye, Esmeralda, all the outlined counties. We handle all those programs, Willis does. We are by far the largest broker in the state of Nevada when it comes to public entity business. In addition to my, those accounts, on a back, a little background, before Aon became the broker for the city, I was the broker with a company called Johnson and J&amp;H Marsh and McLennan, and then it went to Aon, and now I have an opportunity to come back and work with you again. I also was the broker for the city of Reno for a lot of years. A little sidebar on who we are, Willis Towers Watson, we merged with Towers Watson. We are a large international organization, and we bring the best resources to bear that we can here. Councilman Coffin, you asked a question about the fee, our fee is sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. That is a fee, we will net all commissions out of all placements, and that will be our, our income on the placements that we looked at when we reviewed your programs. We take no contingencies on any of our government business. You'll be in the same kind of program as Clark County, which is, we, we put you on a list, insurance companies give money back on the back end, we're all familiar, insurance industry, commission, contingents, we take no contingent commissions on your business. Typical contingent commission, so you all know this, is three to five percent, you pay a million dollars in premium, you might get back thirty or fifty thousand on the back end. We do not take that on any government agency business. Other businesses that we've probably worked with in Clark County, so you sort of know who we are, we work with Caesars, MGM Resorts, City Center, Wynn, Sands Corporation, Pinnacle Entertainment, Sun City Anthem, Sun City Summerlin, Hockasan nightclub group, the largest nightclub operator in the world, and, and many others. Our objective is to bring you the best value at the best price, and to deliver to your staff what is needed. If you wanted to talk to anybody about our work, you sort of could talk to some of the folks at Metro, or the county, or even McCarran Airport, and they can let you know what we do. So I am local, I've been doing business here for over twenty-five years, I've been a resident here for twenty-five years, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your, thank you for your answers, Mr. Halsey. I, I know Willis is a big company, they own the big tower in Chicago, the tallest building in the country.
Well, there's, actually, we put our name on that, Sears moved out, we took the biggest tenant spot, and they put our name on it, because we became a major tenant in that building. So it is, you know, the Willis Tower, yes.
Oh, okay, all righty, you're pretty big, though, I, I think there's no question about that. See, okay, I'm gonna take us back a bit here in thought. Whatever I might say, it has nothing to do with Willis, or Mr. Halsey, or anything like that, or particularly me or our staff, but I do, there is a way around this dilemma. I mean, it, it's an old dilemma, because everybody has been confronted with buying local, we're confronted with buying American, you know? It's like, that's the way it is. So if you, if you think about the way the state, going back, this is one of those damn moments where I go back, and it drives my wife crazy, because they all know how old you are. The way the state used to handle its bidding for all of its P and C, everything, was The way the state used to handle its bidding for all of its PNC, everything, was through a pool of agents. It was the Association of Insurance Agents in the state of Nevada. I think it was NAIA, something like that. And, or NIAA, whatever. The thing is, is that there became no fighting and we had the access to, at that time, several hundred agents who had experience and their companies that they represented, independent people. So they represented the thought and the skill of every conceivable risk out there, because ultimately, you know, you do have that. So then, they got the commission and they used that to support their association. There was no jealousies, there was no arguments about who was local. It might have been a component who was a member of the association that actually was a national company, if you will. But the commissions, which is what we're all fighting about here, I think, went local and they supported local things, which then in return became, they stayed here, the money stayed here. And I think that there may be an answer to this dilemma in that solution. Because I found this, I know there's an association, maybe there's more than one association of agents here, and I'm not a PNC guy, I'm strictly health. And I felt that, that, I brought this up last year or the year before, and we're still fighting this battle over who's local. You individually are local. You are skilled. You obviously possess the talent that needed to do this job. And yet, I'm still worried about the fact that there was perhaps a glitch in the process through no fault of your own. And then the overall problem created by us of our indecision here that sets this thing up for an argument every year, every two years. So, Mr. Halsey, I'm not, I don't want to support this today. And again, I think you understand that it's not personal. And it is a question of, if something was missed in the process, then I'm worried about it. And it is not a shame on the, on our staff, but I'm uncomfortable with what we have here today. And so I'm offering an alternative, which would be for the consideration of the council, but I don't know what's legal today because we are not posted. Brad, consider an alternative. We may be, perhaps in the course of a motion, be permitted to consider an alternative, but I hate to do that right here without having had a thorough thinking through of it. I don't know if any other colleagues have in mind, and maybe what I have, and maybe I'm just one voice out of seven, but that's my feeling anyway. Deep feeling of regret that I'm not happy with this right now, but certainly not happy with any of the people involved. I'm very unhappy, I'm very happy with everybody there. So it's just that seems to me another confluence of bad things happening all at once, and you're the guy here, and poor O'Neill, he's getting baptized today. You must feel like a heathen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I just wanted to say, I do think it's regrettable that we had the time to appeal during Christmas week, if that's true. Over there, city people, is it true that the time to appeal was the five days during Christmas week?
Edward O'Neill.
I didn't see the letter.
Purchasing and contracts manager. Yes, that's been written on all of our protests and...
It's just, it can be written, I'm just saying that that's a really bad time. There are certain times during the year, and that Christmas time to New Year's is a really rough time. I've had complaints from other people about a short time requested or not having enough time in the, you know, and not on this, by the way, on other things. And this to me, I feel just shows a lockstep that perhaps we should have more consideration for applicants if we didn't have that during Christmas vacation and things like that, unless there's some legal reason why you have to have it. But I do know, especially if you're a smaller company, if you're more of an entrepreneur company, you don't have as much staff around. I just say it's regrettable to do that, and I hope that in the future we'd check that out before that happens.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to Mayor Protem, I do want to say that, you know, I know you've worked very hard on this, there's a process in place, but I think what we've heard is there are a couple of little issues there. I think your reputation, everything that Willis has done, everything you've done in your life, and certainly knowing Mr. Carter and his devotion to the city, but certainly everything that you're involved in speaks for itself in the contracts you hold. The only thing that I would say in the future, especially if it's a small field, not for our CFO where there are 80 applicants, but if there's just going forward, that is, as we move forward into the future in all matters, that if it's a small applicant field and if in fact somebody doesn't qualify at a cut, that they have the opportunity to know, one, why they didn't qualify, and then, two, if the field is very small, let them make a presentation. I'm not talking about 80 applicants and I'm not talking about hiring outside. But I do think there's some little flags here because of the various issues we've heard. And so with that, I can see how this occurred. I do feel that I wish Mr. Carter and the other six or seven, if the field were small enough, I know how much time it takes to interview people and go through booklets such as that. Maybe it's impractical and that's why we have a city manager and the city manager has the staff. And so if we can't trust our staff to our city manager, to us, as Councilman Barlow say, we know a little, I think he had it the other way around, but I believe we know a little bit about a lot. And it's just having that, and except for one person down there at the end that I believe is a CPA, the rest of us are not. And we bring with us, you know, our own expertise. So the only thing I would say for the red signs that this is brought out, that going forward, that we really be with small applicant pools. And that too, I agree with Councilwoman, that, you know, to do something for an appeal process, that that would happen at a time that was very difficult for certain, because so many people too were out of town. But at this point, unless there are other comments, Mayor Protem.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate it. Mr. Halsey, I appreciate your comments as well, but not necessary for me because I trust staff as the professionals and I trust Ms. Fretwell's judgment in assembling that 18 that she's already put together. So with that, I'm going to move to approve Agenda Item 37.
Okay. There's a motion on Agenda Item 37. And regardless of how this posts, Mr. Carter, I just want you to know, we appreciate you, we appreciate your family, we understand what you've said, and you've certainly brought to light some concerns. And just know that every day, there's a new day, the motion does pass to move forward with this contract, but there's always tomorrow. And I'm sorry it's been so difficult because we did hear you when you first came in front of us to move forward again and reopen. So thank you for spending it with us, and I know that young man, he's certainly a wonderful fellow, and sorry and wish you and your family the best. And thank you, Betsy, and thank you, team, for it. It was a difficult situation and we have moved forward. Mr. Halsey, we look forward to working with you and seeing you around and glad you live. Do you live in Ward Two or do you live in the county, in which case we may reneg your contract? Do you live in Mr. Beer's area or in Mr. Stavros Anthony, Councilman Anthony? Where do you live? What is your zip code?
89134.
You're saved. You're in Councilman Anthony's.
Close, Lake Mead, did the Hills area, the ramp garden.
You are absolutely safe. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations to you. Okay, Agenda Item 38, an abeyance item, a discussion for possible action to receive a presentation regarding the development and implementation of non-urban streetscape standards and provide direction to staff on matters related thereto.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Tom Perrigo, Planning Director. Yes, this item was initially scheduled for the Planning Commission City Council Workshop back on December 6th, I believe it was. And because the other item ran long, we abated to this meeting. We, Planning and Public Works, have been working closely together to try to resolve some of these issues we have with street standards in the Northwest and making sure that we are well coordinated with Clark County and Regional Transportation Commission. And Mr. Pavelka, who's been spearheading a lot of this work, is going to give you a brief presentation.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, Alan Pavelka, City Engineer for the City of Las Vegas.
Thank you.
And what I will be talking about is the non-urban streetscape standards. I'm going to go over a little bit of the history and the regs that we have. I'll talk a little bit about what RTC is doing with Clark County on their rural standards, talk about some of the issues that we have, and then our recommendations. And then lastly, how you'd like us to direct us to go. So in 2011, complete streets was adopted by the city, so I'm going to talk a little bit about what went on prior to that. There was no adopted standard at that time. Generally, 28 to 34 feet of asphalt with rolled curb and gutter was allowed. Typically, no sidewalks, pedestrian paths or bike lanes were installed. And a lot of times, street lighting was waived except at intersections, and usually then it was only larger developments that had it. We did, we do get a contribution fee if the street lighting is waived, and that continues as we go on. If other, if other improvements are waived, such as curb gutter sidewalk, we have a covenant that we require the developer to sign, and that is to require them to do an SID if so desired by the city. So in 2011, we did adopt the complete streets, which changed things, and what it was is, it really stressed multimodal transportation, so buses, pedestrians, bikes, so we added that element to it. But it didn't, it didn't include a rural standard. Waivers are required for the street lights, which we still get a contribution fee for. But since complete streets was adopted, staff pretty much follows a code and there is no rural standard. So what it does is, they generally recommend denial. It goes to a hearing and then it goes through the Planning Commission and council for approval. So that takes an additional two to three months for property to get it through. So RTC is currently working with the county on their rural standards and we've met with them twice now to go over their recommendations and provide comments. They've put together roadway sections for 60, 80 and 100-foot streets. And in their study, they have three different styles for low mobility. They have just roadside ditches as they have in a lot of the rural area of town. And as it gets to higher mobilities, they go to concrete sidewalks and curb and gutter. So here's the 100-foot right-of-way, and it has concrete curb gutter sidewalks. We really like that. It's got two lanes instead of three in each direction, buffered bike lanes with amenity zones, and it's got sidewalk on one side. We'd suggest we're in approval of that section, possibly shrink down the lanes to make it ADA compliant sidewalk on both sides. And then recommend that if they do specify an equestrian trail, to put it outside the right-of-way and require the HOA to maintain it. Here's the RTC section for the 80-foot right-of-way. It's one lane in each direction with two-way center-left turn lanes, buffered bike lanes and sidewalk on each side. The only thing we propose on that is that instead of asphalt paths, because they're hard to be ADA compliant, that you put concrete sidewalk in it. Now this section isn't from the RTC...
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Mr. Pavelka, why would the county then, if it's hard to be ADA compliant or the RTC, recommend asphalt sidewalks if they're hard to be ADA compliant? Because they have to be ADA compliant just as we do.
Yes, they do. They may, they may not have the same feeling that we do. And the reason it's hard to be ADA compliant generally, Councilman, is that when they come up to the intersections to get the grates to roll properly with the, with the street because there is no sidewalk ramp, it just makes it hard in those areas.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Please continue.
So on the 60-foot right-of-ways, the county's recommendation is to use their rural neighborhood preservation section, which is 32 feet of pavement with roadside ditches, a sidewalk on each side and an amenity zone. But here's what we would like to propose, and that's pretty much curb and gutter everywhere. And so be full pavement curb gutter, but a detached sidewalk with an amenity zone. And I'll get into some of those reasons in a minute. So some of the considerations are ADA. You know, we believe that we need the concrete sidewalks. Maintenance is a huge issue for roadside ditches. You know, graded ditches are the least effective to drain and the most expensive to maintain. So that's why we're recommending curb and gutter in all cases. The MS4 permit compliance for stormwater, that's through NDP. You know, basically, that specifies, don't put any trash, silt, pollution into our Lake Mead watershed. So that is a consideration. When velocities get higher, it pushes the silt down into our storm drain inlets, which is a problem, which is a violation of MS4. Street lighting, a lot of people out in that area aren't fond of street lights and generally they are waived a lot of times. And like I said, we do get a contribution fee for that. SID costs, when we do waive the fees, the SID, we do require, you know, that they do an SID if so desired by the city. But the problem is, we can only charge them the benefit that we do to their property, which generally isn't the full cost of the street improvements. So even though we're requiring them to do an SID, we a lot of times have to get additional money from another fund, and a lot of times that's RTC. They support us on that. And then the last thing for consideration is neighborhood preference. Many residents that live in these areas don't want curb gutter and sidewalks, so that's things to consider. So recommendations is no rural improvements allowed for non-residential and multifamily projects. So we figure the bigger projects with bigger street frontage should put in full improvements. But we, but for smaller ones, and we use 330, but that was a 1/16 section, to allow a development such as a single-family home to match existing conditions. For example, if there is no curb gutter and sidewalk on each side of the development, why make them put it in? And we'd like to waive that through an administrative covenant, so it doesn't have to go before council, if so directed. And then all improvements would be required for development parcels at intersections of two master-planned streets. And the reason for that is two things. ADA, because we should be building the ADA ramps, we're going to need them. And then also drainage. Drainage is really hard without putting in curb gutter sidewalk. It has a tendency to pond in a lot of cases. So back to MS4, I put this one in here because if it's over five feet per second to meet MS4, we should be putting in, we need to address that silt and erosion that happens.
Well, with the mayor's permission, let me stop you again. If these are our recommendations, shouldn't the county and the RTC also have those concerned about the silt and the runoff?
And we have provided that to them. And by all means, I should have said that they're just in the middle of this, so they are taking into consideration the comments that we've had already. So these aren't their final sections that I showed you.
Okay, so these will be our comments back to them? I mean, we're not taking any final actions today?
No. I'm only taking direction and how to proceed.
Okay, and I say that because at the end of the day, when this is all over and the RTC, are they continuing to do this study or are they done with their study?
No, they're in the middle of it right now. They've just invited us to meetings and allowed me to share some of this with you.
Okay, great. I appreciate it. Sorry, Mayor.
So, but the motion then would be to continue the efforts or to proceed with what you're doing rather than to adopt anything specific?
Pretty much, wouldn't it? I mean, I think, I think they're heading in the right direction.
They are.
But our concerns, I would think, would be the same concerns as the RTC, regional flood, the county.
The flood, absolutely.
I mean, all of those, all of the above that you're listing as you're going through this presentation, right? So that's what I just wanted to bring up.
We want consensus, absolutely.
Yeah, and I'll kind of summarize it, but for instance, the second item on this one is require an improvement fee for all items being deferred. Like I said, right now, we just get a fee for streetlights, but we'd recommend that you get a fee for everything that's deferred because SID doesn't cover it all generally.
How do you determine what that fee is? Because obviously, in all, most matters, it would continue to escalate by the time you do it 10 years out. It's going to be 10 times whatever you're charging. So how do you estimate that?
Sure, we'd have to look at that. Right now, I think we'd probably use the bond form or look at using the bond form because it's got the costs on that when we estimate our bond. because it's got the costs on that when we estimate our bond. Uh, but that would be something we'd have to investigate and look at. Also waivers and variances. Right now, I think there's three or four sections to get a waiver, and we'd, we'd recommend changing the city code to put it all into one. So if they're going to waive curb gutter, streetlights, and so on, it's just one waiver, and they could, they handle it in one thing. So what we were hoping is get direction from you, get comments, and then look at the city codes, what revisions it would take, and come back and see you then.
I think that's a good idea. Comments, questions?
Um, I think, if I may, Your Honor. I think you guys are heading in the right direction. I'd certainly like to see where that RTC study goes. You brought up some very valid points about good growth, responsible growth, not only to our environment, but to the rural areas. Um, I don't think, um, I certainly have any problem with the direction you're going right now, but I think we should probably at least, you know, have a private, have a briefing on this individually, or together, certainly with Councilman Anthony and myself, as we represent most of these rural areas anyway. I know Councilman Barlow and Councilwoman Tarkanian do as well. But the, that's the area of growth out there, and that's where we're getting all these waivers from, to begin with, right? So I think just maybe a briefing with both of us to kind of help us understand exactly where you guys are going, and, and we'll go from there.
Well, and too, I'd like to see it come back with an update sooner than six months. That puts us into July. And I'd rather see us have some input back in, in May, maybe sometime.
On our codes, I think you guys know that our code's the best.
We do, and we've got already drafts of the changes put together.
I figured you would. I figured you would, because I've been after Mr. Perrigo for some time, this poor guy. So I appreciate that. I liked that, the presentation of where you're going.
All right, well, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
I agree with what Councilman has stated, and the mayor also, that this seems we're going in the right direction. A concern I have is always where Ward 1 is, is what's urban and not urban, what's not urban. And so, we have many areas that are in, um, what might be called the downtown extended area, which do not have sidewalks. They don't want sidewalks. We even had one recently that came in. I think it was passed by the council. They didn't want lights either, except I then said we had to have some kind of lights, so they did put something on the mailboxes, I guess. But would that be included in this?
Uh, that's a good question. I, I don't think I thought of it that way, because right now, we've got projects, Councilwoman, just to fill in, infill sidewalk projects, just where in parts of urbanized downtown, and we're just going in and filling those in.
And also, I know in Ward 1, and we do have that, and that's a necessity for the ADA aspect of it. But we do have places that take up a lot of, you don't have sidewalks, do you?
No.
No sidewalks there, and I mean...
No lights. We have no lights, except on the major wall.
Yeah. And I mean, with these areas then, that have been like that for years, and since inception, would they be required to move in this direction if we eventually passed it?
Uh, Your Honor, to the extent that, that these standards become, or if we adopt additional standards within the code, or we adopt additional ways of either asking for waivers or administratively approving a cross-section based on what's existing, that would be applicable throughout the city. That wouldn't be just for one particular area. So yes, the answer to your question is yes. I'm sorry.
I said, I know, I realize what you're saying. It would be for all, all parts of the city. It's just I'm concerned, because I have a very significantly large area.
I think, I think the, the purpose of this entire exercise is to create the flexibility and the option so that we can accommodate the kind of street standard that's most appropriate for that area, given what's already there, or given what the desires of the existing residents are. So I think the answer to your question is, we're creating the tools that will accommodate the development in your ward the way that makes the most sense for, for your areas.
See, I could see where the, your area would have some problems, whereas ours gated eventually, so we wouldn't have any problems.
Mayor, I think, Councilman, were you concerned about existing neighborhoods and existing conditions?
Yes, existing neighborhoods.
I don't believe that's, that's the effort here.
That's not this. You're talking about just new neighborhoods? Or you're talking about existing neighborhoods?
That's correct. We were just looking at new neighborhoods, because we can't go backwards.
Oh, new neighborhoods, I'm sorry.
So to, to look at the other criteria, this is for new development.
I see.
And then, so we wouldn't go back and require everybody to go and put in all our curb gutter and sidewalk where it doesn't exist. We'd handle it sort of like we do today.
Well, and then that might have...
Through SIDs.
I, I understand, and that would, might have taken care of the problem behind Wasden Elementary School, which was very strongly a new development, which hasn't started being built yet, however, but strongly no lights and no sidewalks, so that, I understand. Thank you. It's the older ones already established that I had a concern.
I would make a motion, Your Honor, if everyone's done, to accept Mr. Phil Velka's report and continue down this same path. Um, and I'm looking forward to continuity between the county and the city, so everybody's on the same level playing field in regards to those development standards as we move into the future, and grateful to the RTC for, for participating in this as well as you. Alan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a motion, and just as a point of clarification, if you can bring us some information back late April, early May, it would be helpful, is an update.
Will do, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is a motion. Please vote, please post. Thank you. That motion carries most gratefully to you. Number 39, recommended committee bills eligible for adoption at this meeting, Bill number 2016-71. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
And Mayor, just as part of our cross-training efforts in our office, Jack Esslinger from our office will be reading those bills in.
Okay, please do so.
Bill 2016-71, an ordinance to amend the unified development code to reinstate the design commercial C-D zoning district and establish standards therefore relocate and adjust standards pertaining to the P-O and O districts, and provide for other related matters.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Mayor, Mr. Perrigo has an amendment to propose to this bill.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Steed. Your Honor, we real, recognize yesterday, as we were doing another review, a typo in Exhibit B, page 173, Chapter 1908, the CD design commercial. It had the wrong description of CD commercial, so we've amended that so that it now has the correct description in the bill.
So then a motion to approve First Amendment.
Move for approval, First Amendment.
Thank you. On Agenda 39, please vote and please post. Motion carries. On Agenda Item 40, Bill number 2016-72, Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Bill number 2016-72, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Do you have any amendments?
Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 40. Coming in a moment. Is this also a First Amendment?
No, 73 would be a First Amendment.
No. Okay.
It's having to come forward to City Council as a First Amendment, for changing the city's, city's...
No. Yes, no? Mr. Steed.
Is that the annexation?
Yes.
Um, is there an, is there a First Amendment in the backup? Right, but is there a First Amendment in the backup?
Yes, there is.
Okay, then it's a First Amendment.
Thank you very much.
Move for approval with First Amendment.
Thank you very much. Is motion to approve? Please vote and please post. And Councilman Anthony?
Oh, sorry.
Motion carries. On Agenda Items 41, Bill number 2016-73, Mayor Protem Ross, would you like the bill read?
Yes, I would, Your Honor.
Bill number 2016-73, an ordinance to update the description of certain city ward boundaries to reflect the addition and deletion of precinct numbers by the Clark County Election Department, and as a, as a result of annexations or otherwise, and to provide for other related matters. First Amendment.
And this does have a First Amendment. Would make a move to approve with First Amendment.
Thank you. This is a motion on Agenda Item 41. First Amendment, please vote and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 42, Bill number 21675. Mayor Protem, would you like the bill read?
Yes, please.
Bill number 2016-75, an ordinance to amend the business license fee applicable to transportation network companies and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Thank you. This is a motion to approve on Agenda Item 42. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 43, Bill number 21676. Mayor Protem, would you like the bill read?
Yes, please, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Bill number 2016-76, an ordinance adopting additional tags on the mental transient lodging and supportive facilities operated by the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority as required by Senate Bill 1 of the 30th, 2016, special session of the Nevada Legislature, and providing for other related matters.
I would move to approve, and appreciate Mr. Pushnick staying all day with us. That's my motion.
All right, there's a motion to adopt Agenda Item 43. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. And then recommending committee bills eligible for adoption a later meeting, Bill Item 45, 44 and 45, Bills number 216-70 and 2016-74 will be heard at a later meeting. Agenda Item 46 has been obeyed to the 18th of January, which puts us into setting the date on any appeals filed or required public hearings, and instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings, dangerous buildings, or nuisance litter abatements. Thank you. Thank you. We will move on to citizen participation. Agenda Item 48, citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within their jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. Amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as amount of time, any single speakers allowed may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Please come forward and state your name. And Happy New Year.
Hi, Anthony Council Bianco, living in Councilman Coffin's body. Mayor, Staff Counsel, Provost, Mayor, uh, yes. Hi, how was your holiday? I hope mine was horrible. But my cousin, again with this landlord issue, again, right? Sorry about it, but now he just gave us a 24-hour. What a nice Christmas present, huh? And anyway, he's at, I'm going to work with Felipe, hope he, and he can do something, but we ha, I mean, it has to be done. Something is going to happen. Because now, even now with no streetlights, I mean, I would never do it, but I mean, someone other than me can hurt someone, rob them, you know, those streetlights. I have no, I just lost my home. We have to look at this landlord, and it should, I think personally, I don't think it has nothing to do with the city, but it's hope, but community-wise, it does, I guess.
Thank you.
Now, uh, I don't know. I'm just hoping I could stay here, because I don't know where to go, you know? And I will work with Councilman Coffin, Mr. Goodman, and, uh, it's just, I'm, I'm just upset. And because of this, I had no holiday, right? A very good friend of mine just got his disability last year. He was homeless, got his, got himself a room at the Dragon, passed away.
Sorry to hear that.
Yes, because of this. I mean, because of these, uh, you see, but what it is, is they tell you one thing, they'll tell the council, oh, yeah, they'll come here, yeah, I'm going to build this luxury apartment and all this, and everything, and home, uh, for them.
Thank you. Well, I know Councilman Coffin and Mr. Felipe are to continue to try to help you.
Yes, it's, I'm thinking it's pretty well, it's not only me, it's, I'm just here, because I want to speak. Other people, they just go right to the street. And you have a floor master, and down by the cemetery, people sleeping on other people's graves, that's horrible.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for telling us.
I mean, we want to see, yes, but we want to see that has, provides for, uh, work, you know, middle-class, uh, and so on, you know, average, so it's all together in unity, right?
Thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you so much, and you have a good...
Anyone else who wants to speak under this portion of the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to Agenda 49. Councilmember recognition, comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Councilmen Beers, we're starting with you.
Happy New Year, Your Honor. We're back into the swing of things this week with a Coffee with the Councilmen at Charlie's Lakeside. That event is going to be this Friday morning, 7:30 to 9:00. That's about Sahara and Durango. A couple weeks after that, we're going to have our next Beers with Beers, our first of 2017. That'll be on a Thursday night at Three Angry Wives Pub. Sarah's coming, so it'll be four, actually, that night, on January 19th, 5:30 to 7:30. They're out there in Boca Park. Uh, we do still have the business kiosk located up at the Sahara West Library. Invite all citizens to take advantage of this. Save yourself a long trip downtown. If you, if you can do your business on that machine, you should. It's going to be located at the West Sahara Library for several more months. We thank them very much for hosting us out there, and are watching the results quite closely to see how much it's utilized, so we would encourage folks to give it a spin. It was 52 years ago today, on this date of 1965, I didn't know this, actually, that Leo Fender sold his guitar company to CBS, Columbia Broadcasting System, for $13 million. Now, to put this in perspective, I think every guitarist has at least a Strat knockoff, if not a Strat.
Wow.
To put this in perspective, the year before this transaction, CBS bought the New York Yankees for $2 million less than that.
Wow.
Interesting.
Interesting.
And that's all we got, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Anthony. Mayor Protem, not even a missing child.
They didn't give me one this week.
Oh, my. Well, hopefully, everybody was found.
There's lots of missing children, and...
We're gone. We're calling for help.
Thanks, Mayor.
Birthday boy?
Thank you, Mayor. I have quite a few announcements. So we'll begin with January 15th, Christmas tree recycling. For those of us like myself who still has their Christmas tree up with, fully decorated, with lights, for those who are looking for places to recycle your Christmas tree, you may do so by calling 895-3760. There are more than 34 locations throughout the valley to recycle your Christmas tree, and most locations are open 24 hours a day for drop-off. On January 7th, the Civil Rights Film Fest for 2017 will be held at the West Las Vegas Library, showing a variety of movies in recognition of African-American History Month. So for more information on these activities and movie titles, please contact the library at 507-3989. On January 12th, Coffee with the Councilmen, I will be back at Starbucks, located at 1925 North Martin Luther King Drive, at the corner of Mount Moriah and MLK, from 9:00 a.m. until 10:00 a.m. January 14th, we celebrate the Dream School Day Fair at the Doolittle Community Center. Dr. Martin Luther King's dream, deliver resource to empower and motivate youth in the community is what it stands for. Students and families will receive resources and school supplies as they head back to school after the winter break. On January 18th, at 3:00 p.m., Living the Dream, The Moment Continues. Please join us as we celebrate the movement continues on January 18th at the West Las Vegas Library as well, located at 951 West Lake Mead Boulevard. And also, for more information, you may contact them at 507-3989. And of course, the Historic Westside School. We are looking for tenants to come in and basically set up either cafe or office professional space. So if you're looking to do either one of those, space is available, and opportunities are available at this location. Please contact the city, Julie Quisenberry, 229-6551, for more information. And of course, you may follow me on all of my social media platforms, or just contacting my office directly at 229-5443. Happy New Year to each and every one of you, and may this year be very prosperous. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And again, just telling anybody that's still alive and listening, do watch that Hello Mayor program on the third Monday of the month, the one that will be a repeat of John Ensminger about the water district. On Monday, January 16th, as Councilman Barlow... Gas Streets in downtown. Unfortunately, I will be in Washington, D.C., but we'll be keeping an eye on you all and hope it's a wonderful parade we find every year. We have the most enormous turnout, and that parade and our Veterans Day parade are sensational. My annual State of the City address will be delivered here in Council Chamber Thursday, January 12th at 5:00 p.m. You may view the broadcast live on KCLV Channel 2, and will also be livestreamed from the city's sleek new website at lasvegasnevada.gov. There are many accomplishments to celebrate, many exciting initiatives on the horizon for 2017, so please, hopefully, you'll join in and watch it, and then give us some feedback or ask questions. Our next, my next Council Coffee with the Mayor will be in joining Councilman Barlow at the Starbucks at 1925 Martin Luther King Jr. to ask questions and share ideas. It will be at 8:00 a.m. on the 25th of January, Tuesday, from 8:00 to 9:30. Not 9:00, but an earlier start for you. And our next city council meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 18th, at 9:00 here in chambers. Mayor Protem will be presiding, as I mentioned. I will then be again, still in Washington, D.C., able to call in with whatever. And so, anyway, wish you all a wonderful year, and thank our staff, our technology, our law enforcement, and appreciate everything, and just be careful, be safe, and thank you all for participating today and hanging with us. And we are adjourned.